Welcome, everyone. I call to order the first budget meeting of 2024. It is April 3, 2024, and we are in the Nashua High, Nashua High North Boardroom. It is 6:05 PM. And Heather, do you want to do roll call for me?
It's not green on mine. Can you hear it? It's, it's not working. All right, I'm going to borrow Ms. Daniels Williams' microphone. Okay, and then I will unplug it and plug it back in as directed. Ms. Bishop? Here. Mr. Johnson? Not here. Ms. Prin?
Here.
Ms. Daniels Williams?
Here.
Mr. Clappy is not here. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Julia?
Here.
Ms. Lampier is not here, and Ms. Raymond is here. So we have a quorum. We have Mr., we have Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfey, Mr. Poska, Mr. Donovan. We have guests tonight.
We do have some guests who'll come up during the presentations.
I'll write them down when they get here. Thank you.
All right, so unless I have forgotten anything? No? Good. All right. Without further ado, take it on, Central Office.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Want to thank the Budget Subcommittee for providing us this opportunity to go over FY 2025 budget and outline our vision for next year. So, next. So again, just want to reiterate where the district's vision is around ensuring every student will have access to great appropriate assignments, strong instruction, deep engagement, and teachers with high expectations every day in every class. Also that every student and family is an authentic partner and should have real opportunities to shape the experiences students have in schools, receive accurate and accessible information about students' progress, and have a legitimate role in decision-making. So we're hoping over the course of the next two weeks that we reflect and make sure that what's in our budget also is accurate in carrying out our vision statement. In the next slide, what's going to be in our budget is really a shift, and we have to really think about the underlying tones of what we see and what's our, our current system and then what's our emergent system. Over the last couple of years, we've been having conversations on how do we reimagine our schools? And sometimes we only see what's above the surface on an iceberg, some events and where we react to things. What we don't see sometimes what, what lies in the structure is what is behind and lower than, under the surface. What patterns are going on? What's been going on in Nashua for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? And you've seen over the last of the course, two years, we've been addressing some of those transition. Rating policies, leveling policies, the makeup of the middle school, the transformation. We've been looking at our structures, what policies, fiscal structures do we have in place that we have to question? And also, more importantly, our mental models. How did we imagine what our schools look like in 2024, 25, and 2035? And you'll see some of the shifts along those reimagining in this year's budget. So sometimes we only talk about events, things that we can see, things that are tangible. But I want to assure you in the community, there's so much work happening behind the scenes that is just not monetary. It is really shaping our mental models and re-repursing and investing in areas that is going to shape our schools for the future. So you'll see some changes in this year's budget about repurposing money. So even though it's, it might be conversations that are revenue neutral or again, changing some policies, but what's not in the price tag is how do we change the mental models of how do we do school? And I think that's very important in order to fulfill our mission on, on the first slide. Next. So how do we do that? And this isn't, same slide from last year. It's, we do it by doing things, and our ELLs firmly believe the adults in our system is our greatest asset. And in order to move forward, we have to invest in our professional learning communities. And in there, it's focusing on results, focusing on collaboration, and focusing on student learning. Next. So our focus on learning every day in every classroom, we should be asking, what do we want our kids to know and be able to do? How will we know if they learned it? It's our assessment system. What are we going to do if the students don't get it? If they don't meet standard? What's our support structures? What's the money behind that? Is it, what are the resources that we need to put in place? And the last question that sometimes we forget, what are we going to do if the students get it? How do we challenge students up? And what are those pathways? Again, you heard me multiple times say I think we have the best slogan, it's behind the screen, "Gateways are opportunity." How do we have 9,700 gateways to opportunities for every student to be successful? And this is a focus on learning in every conversation in our, in our, in our schools and also in our budget conversations, every Subcommittee meeting. These four questions should come up. How does it come back to what do we want our kids to know and to be able to do? What's our assessments? How do we know if the students learn it? How are we going to respond if they don't get it? And how do we respond if they aren't challenged? Next slide. So some of these strategies that we want to see in the classroom, and this is from Jim Chapius. Simple, simple things as we reimagine our schools going forward. And this is, could happen anywhere. How do we provide our students and our staff with clear and understandable vision of the learning target? What are we doing today? Do the students understand what's the purpose of the lesson? Are the, are the adults in the classroom clear on purpose? Strategy two, using models of strong and weak work for our students. How do we know what's good? If we don't have models to show our students that this is proficient work and this is less than proficient work, we need to provide students with models. It's the same thing for our, for our teachers. If they don't know what grade level work looks like, how can they provide, number three, descriptive feedback to improve the learning in the classroom? Strategy four is, it's really about teaching students to self-assess, empowering our students to build the learning, to be active participants. So how do they know that they, the students know what is good? They have to have ownership in their process and use strategy number two to self-assess against a standard. That needs to be clear and evident as we move forward. And strategy five is provide opportunities for students to track, reflect, and share in their progress. Again, this is that transformation on how our students, K through 12, have value and input and reflect on how well they did on a daily basis. So again, these are five strategies that assess their five students' learning. So we'll be talking about more of these strategies moving forward. Next slide. And our focus on collaboration, again, as I said earlier, our adults are our greatest asset in our students. We need to provide opportunities for our students to collaborate. And collaboration represents a systemic process in which teachers work together independently in ways to impact classroom practice. So again, we have some of the best experts that we possibly could bring into the district already in district. So how do we create those structures for our teachers to empower educators or any other adult to engage in meaningful dialogue to look at results? So I think that's incumbent on the work that we do, whether it's job embedded professional development or other resources. But we have to provide teachers time to collaborate. Next. Now focus on results. We have to know what's our academic return on investment. So how do we create systems, system-wide standards for content and performance? And through our ELLs, how do we look at our data to ensure that we have continuous improvement? Next. And this year, our budget priorities really haven't changed. We still have to invest in tier-one systems around our curriculum instruction assessment. For example, at, at the elementary school, ensuring that we're following the research on science of reading at the secondary level of, you know, a heavy investment in Fortuna of Lorna. Those are just two programs of many, but they impact PK through 12. Even though it's science of reading, more of that impact on elementary, it will impact the entire system. Fortuna of Lorna was focused at the secondary level right now will spread PK through 12. Also, our budget priorities, we have tonight from Mr. Choper and Ms. Booten around our ELL services. We had a presentation last night from the Department of Justice and those priority areas. This is a non-negotiable, we can not, no matter what happens in this budget, stop the work that we're doing in that area. The other budget priority is our special education services. And lastly, ensuring real-world learning experiences. How do we pilot with our wonderful community, media-based businesses or other members to expand that classroom wall so that our students are engaged in real-world learning experiences and they have relevant, rigorous opportunities to apply their, in their classroom into real-world experiences? And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Donovan, who's going to get more into the numbers.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start with the numbers, I did pass out to everybody. It's a two-page piece that you can, when I get a little further in, you can follow through, but it basically shows the budget by account for the current year we're in now and, and the proposed budget that we're speaking about tonight. So, but a quick, quick run-through of, of the district. We, as everyone knows, 18 schools, 12, 12 elementary, three middle, two high, and the Franklin Street facility, which is an alternative school and a preschool. Number of students this year, these are October 1 counts. If you use the same October 1, it's, it's a way to, to track it on a consistent basis. We're at 9,772 students. Last year, we were 9,00915. Cost per student, that comes from the DOE report, so that's reporting on last year. That's $17,775. Now, that number last year was only 16,361. I don't know about the word "only," but it was, it was, part of it is some of the ESAR spending. So I'm assuming that the increase we got from 20, after 24, it'll probably stay there. It'll go up, then the percentage increase should reduce going forward. Free and reduced students, that number has been between 40 and 43 ever since I've been here. So it seems like a fairly steady number. ELL students is creeping up. It was 17% last year, 17 and a half, but it's been in the same ballpark. And the special education students for the last few years has been between 18 and 20 and, and share at 20%. Okay, here is the graph of showing, showing what the budget is in fiscal year '24, which is the year we're in now, compared to fiscal year '25. As you can see, the two big pieces of the pie, so to speak, are labor and benefits. That would be the, that's about 83%, I believe, if you add those two pieces of pie up. That number is, will typically run 83 to 86% on any given year. And then there's, I just break out the other, I call significant line items, utilities, transportation, the out-of-district tuition line, it's bed support services, and you see there's a significant increase. I'll get into that a little more in a minute. And then all other expenses, so all other, all other expenses is only about 5% of the budget. So when you're looking at making changes, obviously, the areas put the most money, offer you the most options for change.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I just have a, sorry, I just have a question on the chart. It says FY '24 adopted and FY '24 proposed. Is that this year's proposed?
Yeah, that's '25 proposed.
Okay.
So that, yeah, the '24 is the one, the year we're in now, '23, '24.
Right, so on the chart, should it say FY '25?
Should, you're right. Up top, it says it right. It doesn't, that should say FY '25 in the second column. You're correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Okay, this shows on this current year, basically, where, this covers all the expenses to run the district. So it's the operating budget approved at this level, which is, this year's $125,000. The benefits, which are added to our budget by the city through various calculation processes, that's $48 million. We have grants, not counting the ESAR, of about $12,300,000 this year, $12,300,000, the two largest, getting the IDEA of the Title I grants. And then the ESAR CARES funds remaining, that's an estimate, but going into this year, we had about $14.5 million left of the ESAR funds. Bonded debt, that's the, the principal and interest on the bonds we use to improve our schools for the most part, that's $9.3 million a year. Special revenue funds, most of which is the food service, but those are some other smaller funds. So if you add all those numbers up, it's about $216 million. So that's really what it costs. Those are the funds used to run the school district in Nashua. Then we receive in return, back from, most of this money comes back from the state of above $58 million. So therefore, the difference between the 216 and the $58 million of revenue, that's what the taxpayers pay to run the district.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. On the ESAR CARES funds, the $14.5 million that's left, are there conditions on how that can be spent? Because I know that this was a big question recently at the Alderman.
There's, yes, any grant, the ESAR funds had more freedom or uses than most grants. Most grants are fairly specific, what you can, you can use those funds for. ESAR had a much wider range, but you still had to put the activity in the grant, the state had to approve the activity before you could spend the money. Okay, so starting off, here was the budget that was approved by the BOA last year, the $125,430. The city added another $48 million. So the budget, if you look at the budget book in the city or any report on the city's website, you'll see the school district's operating budget is $173,664 for this year. So this is a proposed operating budget without benefits. And the proposal that we're bringing forward tonight is $131 million. That's an increase of $5,630 million, and that's 4.49% increase. The suggestion by the mayor was 4% increase, with all the changes, and you'll hear more as all the groups speak, the needs of the district. We're proposing at this point in time a 4.49% increase.
Do you want me to hold my questions to the end, or can I keep interrupting?
I personally love that you're interrupting because I would rather have questions in the middle and make sure everyone understands things as we go. So please, by all means, Ms. Raymond.
If we were to have a budget that didn't have any changes, like if we kept the same services and personnel that we have this year, and the only changes were like, you know, cost of living and contractual increases, et cetera, what would that percentage be?
Well, I mean, if you say no changes, we had a lot of staff in ESAR funds.
Yep, so if, if we weren't-
If we kept all those staff.
If we kept our staff, if we just adjusted based on like we were doing the same services that we had last year, what would the percentage increase be?
Probably about eight and a half to 9%.
Thank you.
Do you feel confident that 4.49% can be an agreement that's reached to with the mayor? Like, is that something that he's going to scoff at?
I think Dr. Andre had something to say.
So, so that's our job is to propose it and kind of go from there and make the point on what do we need to run the school district? And hopefully, you'll hear tonight from the Curriculum Office and the ELL Office. Next week, we'll hear from Special Education Plan Ops, IT, and Special Education, I think I missed one, that we make a convincing argument that this is a realistic number and it's not something that we should be negotiating. I just wanted to make a point on if we kept everything as-is, and you heard many of us over the last couple of weeks, like, maybe everything as-is isn't everything that we needed, was everything being successful. So I just want to, again, as we go back to that first slide on what's our current reality and where do we need to go in that shift, just because we had something in the past doesn't mean that we had a return on the investment. So I think over the next two year, two years, two weeks or so, you'll hear our budget and really from the departments and getting into why we think this is a reasonable budget and how it's going to set us up for our success. So I just want to be careful on just, we, we are very cognizant in this budget to put in what we think is going to maximize our return on the investment. This is again, probably one of the highest percentages coming in, in a long time. So we think it's reasonable and it's still higher than what the mayor requested us to come in, come in at.
Does anyone else have any, Ms. Shawanda Daniels?
So I, I was wondering, as we're putting together this budget, this budget reflects a lot of changes that we want to see in the future. And in other meetings that we've had, we've said that we wanted to stay still and make sure that we're taking care of the teachers and we're taking care of the buildings, but we're not doing anything extra. When I look at this budget, I see different changes, different things, and I want to know why now, when other things can't happen now.
So again, I think over the next two weeks, you'll hear why we're proposing it. And some of the things are radical changes. So again, I think there was things in ESAR that we just can't simply afford moving forward. So, so hopefully, over the next two weeks, as you hear the presentations, that we can get further into detail and answer in those questions.
Want to add something? I think what we've been prepping for is difficult conversations. I'm glad that you guys have thought through on this, but I think we're entering into a couple of conversations that are going to be hard to have, and I think that our administration has done a lot of work on trying to figure out what is best. So I just want to, I know everybody's ready for this, but I think we're just, it's going to be an interesting couple of weeks, and I want to give our support to the people who've been doing all the hard work on this. So that's all.
Do you guys feel supported? I will bring in cookies next week. Are there any other questions before we continue? No?
Okay, so typically, what I do is I break the budget into two pieces, sort of the salary piece or the, which is the most significant piece. So of that $131 million, $99,984 is related to salary costs. So that's an increase of $1.9 million over last year. So percentage-wise, it's only a 1.95% increase, but it's the significant piece of the budget. So basically, 84% of the budget's going up 1.95% is a way to look at that. Next. Okay, so this is, sort of gives you a little breakout of where the increases in the salary accounts are coming from. So most of the money is in the wages, the full-time and part-time wages, and any sort of estimate we put in for a salary increase. If there isn't, if there's a contract in place, the person has budgeted what their new contract value is for next year. If there isn't a contract in place, we put an estimate in for the group based on a percent of the total dollars in that group at this point in time. And those two, that shows in, in what we've budgeted this year is a 2.122% increase in those accounts. The wages per DIAM account, that, you'll, you'll see that through here. That's decreasing, but a lot of the reason why that's decreasing, that's where we pay for subs, okay? So in the old days, we used to have about $1.2 to $1.3 million on that line. You can see last year was 1.3. And basically, that would be used to pay for, for the subs. In the old days, well, old days, probably five years ago, four, five years ago, all the subs were called in through a, an internal person that we had would call and, and for the subs. Since then, we've changed a number of ways. We've hired a firm called ESS that does the sub recruiting and, and pays the subs. So that has been in place for about two years now. We also, using ESAR funds, had, had teachers cover for teachers. And that happens easily at the high school because of block scheduling, but they get paid to sub for another teacher. The high schools principals like that better than just having a random guy like me walking around trying to manage high school kids. And so there's that, we, we put that back into the budget. And then there's also the other types of subs where PARAs covering for teachers and just bringing in, having teachers cover for teachers that are out long-term. So in total, we've got multiple categories, but on this one line item, it's lower here, but it's going to be higher in another line item. So severance, we kept that the same based on the number of people retiring the last couple of years. It's been running in the 9, 950 to $1 million range. We feel pretty comfortable with that. The next line down is the board wages. If you're not aware, but you probably are, that the Board of Alderman voted for an 80% increase to all the boards in the city. So that happened about a month ago, so it's effective July 1st. So that's your 28/8.
Ms. Raymond, yeah?
To be clear, the Board of Alderman voted that they would increase stipends for all board members on every board in the city, but we have to take it out of the school budget for our section.
Oh, yes.
And so, and we can't-
We can't deny that if we wanted to?
You can certainly deny it.
I think it's ridiculous that we are the highest-paid school board members in the country that I've seen.
No, that's not true.
I would say out of the public schools-
LA makes like $150,000 a year.
For their school board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I say, I know Oakland doesn't get paid at all, so that's crazy. But I hate being the only person at the conferences that's like, "Yeah, I get paid," when everyone else is a volunteer.
Let's look at the big picture. I've already had this conversation with people.
Okay, please continue if there are no other questions.
I'm going to go all the way back up to the top to the wages for full-time and part-time, which includes allowances for salary and increases. So if we're laying off teachers, shouldn't that-
That would be in there too. That, that would be netted within there, yes.
Then how come it went up instead of going down if we're losing 13 teachers?
We, we're adding some teachers. You'll, you'll see the detail as, as we get into it more, but where, there's also contracts. So if a teacher makes, let's say, $60,000, they might- So if a teacher makes, let's say 60,000, they might make 62,000 next year. So every person has a raise built in based on what the contract is. You'd have to lay off a lot of teachers to make that a negative number, a lot of anybody. Okay, so then there's the non-labor piece. So these are all the costs that aren't in, in the labor section. There's an increase there of 3.7 million. So percentage wise, it's 13.6. Keep in mind, it's, it's only about 16% of the budget, so the 13.6, that's what melts with the 1.95 to equal the 4.49. So that's the highest number this set of accounts has ever seen, but we'll get into the, the detail of why that is right now. And if you wanted to follow through with that sheet I gave you, the highlights of these, they're all in that sheet and they all, they're highlighted in the sheet. So where are the, where's this 13.6% coming from? The staffing services, that's the subs that we, we pay ESS. We used to budget that up in labor. It's really a contracted service. So for the first time last year, we should have budgeted it down here. I ended up having to transfer it down here because that's where it ends up getting charged, but that's what the 950,000 is. So that's really a change from labor down into the non-labor, but in reality, it's, the cost was there last year and the cost is going to be there this coming year. The pupil support services, those are the OT and PT services for the most part for the special ed students. Those, we use outside services. Two agencies do most of the work. They have, have staff that's worked with us for many, many years. So we have increased that about $100,000 for next year. Contracted services. So this is the cost that is the biggest driver of the increase. And it's really 1.5 million of that increase. What it is, is this year, we've been unable to fill special ed teaching positions, psych positions, BCBA's, various specialists within the sped group of teachers as well as RBTs and paras. We haven't been able to fill all those positions. We're going to spend this school year 3.5 million dollars on outside agencies to cover the costs of those teachers that we haven't been able to fill. Now, a couple of things that happened when the Esser funds were out there, they were so voluminous, we had 47 million dollars of Esser funds. So it, what, everybody knew about these funds and they were all finding out, how can I get my piece of it? Okay? So a lot of, lot of groups involved received money that isn't going to be around for them in the future. But what happened is we saw the rates for these outside services increase. The hope is going forward that those rates won't stay that high because school districts won't have the Esser funds, so they won't have the funds to spend. But since we are at 3.5 million dollars, of which about 2 million of that was covered by Esser funds, there are no more Esser funds. And we've had this short staff in special education for two or three years now at least. I said, we really, if we're going to budget this correctly, hopefully we can find some of that staff. It'd be great if we could find it all. If we could find it all, we have 1.5 million dollars extra. I doubt we're going to find it all. But if I was going to be super conservative, I would have made that 2.5 million, 2.2 million, because I do, I do have those positions in the budget payroll. If we don't fill them, we take the money out and we put it into contracted service. So we'll have this year, what cost us, for next year, what cost us this year about 3.5, we'll have about 2.5 in the budget. So there's a slight risk to that, but then again, budgeting super conservatively, that 4.4 number just went up to 5.5. So I think somewhat comfortable, if the budget is managed correctly, that we can stay within that number and hopefully we can get some staff in the board, that would be the key. But that's why that number's so high and that's the main driver of this budget. The next two items are water and heating gas. Water that came from Mr. Smith, we expect higher cost from Kennachuck. The heating gas is higher because the rate went up. The cost per term we're paying right now is about 8.2%. We had a contract in place prior to that at about 5.5%. That 8.2 is through December of this year. Hopefully that number will go down. If it does, there might be a little extra money there. If not, then we're going to need that whole 200,000.
Just, I know there's going to be a lot of questions about the contractual, contract services. Mr. Alexander will be presenting next week of like what goes into the type of services and what's federally mandated that we cannot say we're going to take a risk on. And so again, we don't have a choice if a student has an IEP on how do we provide those services. We just can't simply say we don't have the money to do it. So next week, I know this is a big number and we need to digest it, but next week, Mr. Alexander and his team will be here to go dive deeper into how do we support our students?
Okay, telephone, you know, it's been running 200 to 220. We're putting in a new telephone system starting this summer. Hopefully that number at some point will go down, but it's gone nothing but up. So I'm budgeting slightly less than I'm expecting it to come in this year. Next. Okay, transportation services, both special education and, and regular transportation services, there's a contract in place. That's the increase to the contract. It's actually a little less than that. The last couple of years, we've been budgeting the bus monitors as if we were going to fill all the positions. They never fill all those positions, so I sort of dropped that budget down a little bit in the special ed to bring it in closer to what I think it'll actually come out for the year.
Ms. Raymond?
On the transportation costs, we provide transportation for all of the kids K through eight in the city, whether they go to our schools or not. Is that correct?
To, yeah, if they go to a charter school in the city of Nashua, we provide transportation. If they go to one outside of the city, we don't.
What about the private schools?
Well, for the, yes, for the K to eight, for the Catholic school, yes.
Are we also providing special education transportation for students to come to and from our schools to the charter schools for special education services? Or are we sending people there?
I believe we have staff that goes to the school. Okay, educational supplies, that's really an account that most of those costs are budgeted by the individual schools, so there is an increase. Some of it might be due to, I think some of it's due to our curriculum budget and, and and some of it's just for the schools. So in total, it, it shows a higher amount in that line, but it's, there's other lines that are lower. The next two, testing materials and subscriptions, as the curriculum experts will speak about next. The increase, we've been running the curriculum budget for supplies and materials, et cetera, about 650,000 for the last few years. This year, that number's up a little bit over a million, so there's a 330,000, 350,000 dollar increase in the curriculum budget itself. And I will let, like I said, the curriculum experts explain why that number's higher. And then computer software, couple of things driving that number. One is our budget software. We were sharing with the city, is now all ours because the city has abandoned us and left us on our own. It's a great piece of software, but it's expensive. But for now, we need to use it at least for one more year. Hopefully, a little bit more out of it. And then the other cost, the increase in the computer software is related to moving a lot of our softwares onto the cloud versus having them inside due to the ransomware attack we had last spring. So that's 3.6 million. The total increase was about 3.7 million. So those are the accounts that pretty much make up the big difference.
I noticed on the previous slide that there was nothing there for electricity. Is that because we've done such a good job with our solar panels?
Our, I think the solar has helped, yes, and the work that we put into these two high schools by upgrading the equipment, so yes. We hope that actually will go down even a little more. We did get a little data on the solar panel use. We use about 45 to 47% of the solar we generate. We wished it would be higher than that. Part of that reason is it generates a lot in the summer. We don't need a lot, but we knew that going in. We're hoping at some point that we can get, because I figured nine of the months out of 12, you're actually in the building, so hopefully we can use a little bit more than that going forward. But that's kind of our first data on multiple solar installations that we have at the district.
Thank you.
Where does the rest of it go?
Back to the grid. They give us a little something for it, but it's nowhere near what we pay. Okay, line item reductions, there's not really a whole lot. Couple small items, but really there's, there's no big decrease in any one of the lines this year. Okay, so just talking about new costs, that 1.5 million that I talked about. So that's a new cost that we've never really put in the budget before. And then what's titled there, existing teacher substitutes, that's teachers subbing for teachers. And that is an estimate based on what we've been, this, this cost has been going to the Esser grant for the last two to three years that we've been doing this. So that money's all gone. The decision was to keep this, so that's an increase in the budget this year.
Just to clarify, so the Esser funds are gone, but we are going to adopt the cost so that if a teacher is out, other teachers can volunteer their planning period to sub in for a stipend?
Correct.
I just want to kind of clarify, so we cut down the wages per diem by approximately 390,000 and, but now we do have the existing teacher substitutes for 372,000. So overall, like, it's almost like we're saving the 18,000 between the two line items?
Well, the, the wages per diem went down by 950 because we moved it to that staffing service line and then it went up by this 300.
Okay. Thank you.
Next. Okay, new positions in the budget this year, this coming year. New school with fields, which is great for every kid at Elm Street. They don't have to take a bus to some field somewhere, but we really do need someone to take care of those fields, so there's an increase for a groundskeeper. That's the salary of a groundskeeper next year per contract. We are adding seven ELL teachers to this budget. There was talk about potentially more than that, but Mr. Chopa can speak more of it. At this point in time, we have seven new ELL teachers in the operating budget. And we have three new family engagement coordinators. Mr. Chopa can speak about what they do. We've been using them in part-time roles for a number of time. Now we're going to make it a full-time position and most schools will have a family engagement coordinator. So those, those equal the 77,000. Next. Okay, so here is the, coming to the operating budget. These items were all in the Esser grant, okay? There were more than this, but this was the, the decision of, of the team, which items were in Esser or which staff positions were in Esser that we, we need in our operating budget. So there's seven more ELL teachers. So those aren't the same seven. Those are seven that exist that were charged to Esser the last couple of years. Now we're moving them over to the operating budget because that's one of our priorities, ELL teachers. The IT, there's two assistant systems administrators. Those are the people that fix your computers. We've gone to a one-to-one in the middle school and the high school. We have a lot more computers. Esser brought in millions of dollars worth of equipment. We need more people to help keep those pieces of equipment up. Back about three years ago, we added a database administrator in IT. They feel very strongly that that's important going forward, so that position has been moved to the operating budget. Same goes with the digital coordinator. That's a, a position that's been, I think about a year and a half or so, and that's going to be moved in this year's budget. There were four family engagement coordinators in Esser. Those staff are being moved over to the operating budget. There was a curriculum coach in, in the Esser grant for the secondary. That person's being moved over. And there was an attendance officer. We had one attendance officer in the district for a long time, serving all the schools with Esser. We brought in another one. She has been working, I think, three years for us now, and she pretty much deals with the high schools and the other one deals with all the other schools.
Are these the same as school resource officers or something different?
No, the resource officers are policemen. These are, are prunacy officers.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that's about a million dollars worth of people moving into the operating budget from Esser. Next. Okay, reductions in staff. In this budget, there are seven elementary positions being eliminated. My understanding, I'm not the human resource director, but that will not affect an individual. There's enough people leaving. There might be some people that need to move a school, within a school, one school to another, but, but seven elementary positions being eliminated. And there are 12 middle school positions being eliminated. Total of those positions, those 19 positions is 1.18 million. And there were another 14 positions within Esser that aren't being moved over to the grant, to the operating budget. So that's, they totaled 979,000. Those are mostly teachers and/or guidance positions. There were a number of guidance positions that were added in Esser.
Will we get a presentation about how that will impact our student to guidance counselor ratio, ratios?
Student to guidance counselor or?
Right, yeah, because I think, I mean, I think that the, the feds suggest like, I don't know, 250 kids per guidance counselor, the state says like 500. I know we go back and forth depending on the school and.
Yeah, we can break that down for you, but it's, we're still within the guidelines. There's two schools that we have a watch on, but, but we'll be in the guidelines. In the next slide, it'll show the impact on class, class size.
Next. Okay, so here is, Dr. Andre had said is, with all the changes, here's the projected elementary class size, which in total is 18.4. It varies obviously on school and on grade. That chart takes, if you were a first grade, it moves the first grade over to second grade. In the kindergarten, I believe it just uses what we had for this year. But I think I heard the other day that the kindergarten registrations are kind of online with where they were at this time last year. And if, and if you look across, you know, every three years, there's about the same number of students. When you take a three years, add them together and roll that through. When you take a three years, add them together, and roll that forward, so the number of students, there is, there has been no spike in the number of students. It's been fairly steady. I mean, the total has gone down, but when you look at these groupings, that's what the numbers show.
And before, there's a couple of classes, like, we still have to massage and move a couple of people around, so we know that, for example, like, Birch Hill, grade three at 26.5 isn't going to be 26.5. And we also know in grade four, Birch Hill is not going to be 11 kids in a class. So there are still some interior moves going around, but we just want to quickly show that even with elimination of seven positions at the elementary level, our average class size is still going to be about 18.4 across the district. And we do have some watches on some schools that have a little higher number that we might have to, again, adjust according to the enrollment moving forward.
Thank you.
What's the teacher's contract say for class sizes for elementary? Because I'm seeing a couple 30s in those.
Yeah. We won't have 30. Again, these are, we'll make those adjustments. It's...
I just can't imagine 38-year-olds.
No, absolutely not. We are, I would like no more than low 20s. That's the number that we're aiming for. I think the contract says 27, but I think even 27 is too high. So again, we have some watches there. You know, with Dr. Crisp, we're not going to have two classrooms at grade three at 30, so there'll be an adjustment there. So we'll be sliding some teachers around. But again, just throwing it out there on just where we're at, you can see the impacts. We have some room there.
I mean, you mentioned 30. There's also one that says 10. There's 13. So the school will adjust that. The school's not going to have 10 second graders and 30 third graders. I mean, they'll move a teacher.
Do the kindergarten classes have pairs? Just because some of these numbers are really high for kindergarten, the projected, especially if some of the neatest schools, like Led Street with 22, that's high for kindergarten.
So there is key support.
I know, is there any possible way that we could get updated numbers of something? I mean, you're saying that like, these numbers are not going to be accurate. Is there any way we can get something that's maybe a little bit more accurate that doesn't maybe suggest class sizes that are close to 30 and close to 10?
Yeah, so we'll update that over the next two weeks for you. But again, and then those numbers move over the summer, so as we, as the projections move. But again, this was an exercise showing that what's going to be our overall student-to-teacher ratio. Again, how many FTEs do we need, knowing that, just again, picking on Birch Hill, that a teacher can move from fourth grade to third grade and balance that out? So the principal will have that kind of flexibility.
Questions?
And again, this slide, we presented this slide a couple of weeks ago, just again, looking at even with the reconfiguration of the teams, what a projected class size could look like. Again, this is over the summer, how many students end up being enrolled in sixth grade or transferring out. Again, we're proposing elimination of positions, what the impact will be at the school level. And then the last slide is just our overall.
Yeah, the last slide just shows you from fiscal 18 through proposal for next year, what the superintendent request was, what the amount approved by the Board of Alderman was. And then on the far right, you can see the number of students over that time period. So...
Just, I, given that our numbers of students with extra needs, right, keep going up, so our numbers of special education students, our number of English language learners, and our number of duly identified students goes up. And those students frankly cost more because they need more services, and it's appropriate for us to do that. So I hate linking, I just, I hate linking the fact that like, our students' numbers are going down, but costs are going up. But that's because the students that we have have significantly higher needs over time. And the services, the cost of them, has become significantly higher since COVID, like, a lot, especially in special education. So I just, I think it's important for the public to note that it isn't a one-on-one, and that based on the first chart that you showed us, our per-student spending was 17,000, and the average in New Hampshire is 20. And some schools are up to 45,000 per student. So I just, I don't want people to get the impression that we are, I don't know, like, having a money party over here that isn't going to things.
Special?
I have a question. With the Medicaid expansion, are we able to see any additional revenue with the increase in win-of-service for like PTOT?
You know, I don't know. I mean...
I don't know either.
The numbers haven't gone up any. There's been discussions about this for years.
I ask this every year.
Well, no, I know, but I'm not just, not just saying response to you that we get lots of information, but that number stays about the same each year. So like I tell people, I'll believe it when I see it.
Same.
I was just wondering, with the proposed new program that's going to be going into the new middle school, will that bring some of those out-of-district costs down, the placements where students have to be placed out of district?
Possibly. Will it happen next year? Maybe not. I think the hope for the program is it'll, kids won't go out, they'll stay in. Now, we did run a program this year where we brought three out-of-district students back, and as Mr. Alexander can speak more about that next week. But yeah, I think that, that's the, at least the business plan side of it is, yeah, don't let them go out. And some of the students, when they're out in the various out-of-district facilities, struggle at certain facilities. So there's your opportunity to sort of bring them back if you can provide those services.
Well, that would be a great benefit in more than one way.
Ms. Gilio?
It seems that we would hope to get more from the state, but that seems to be tied up in the courts right now. Do we have any hope that that might be resolved in the upcoming school year?
No.
No, thank you.
Ask the lawyers.
No, and just to talk about Medicaid expansion and reimbursement, a bill passed the House last week that would require parents to do additional permission slipping in order to let the district bill Medicaid for those services. So we're still required to provide the services, but parents could withhold permission for us to get reimbursement from Medicaid. So we'll see what happens in the Senate and with the governor on that one.
And just a follow-up question about Ms. Gilio's, the additional funding that could possibly come from the state. Does that go directly to the school board?
No, that's...
Not the school, we don't get it.
No, I actually, I asked the mayor.
It goes right into my bonus.
No, I asked the mayor about it, and it goes into the city budget, and then the mayor decides what portion of that gets a portion to us. And one would theorize that, like, it's $12.1 million next year additional, and we're getting five, I think, of that. But one would theorize that the other seven goes to benefits, but there's really no way for us to know.
Okay, so we have no control over that money. Okay, thank you.
I tried.
If there's no questions here, and I think we just heard like the business side, so I think I want to get into the more exciting side in transition to what's happening in our classrooms with our teaching and learning, and hand the floor over to Dr. Safdie and Mr. Poska to really talk about our vision and how our curriculum is coming to life. So...
If you could actually hold on one second, Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I have one more question, which is going into the curriculum and instruction and assessment. It's a great segue. Like, that seems like to be a big ticket item in the budget, too. So yet again, my question is, why now? Why do we have to continue to do this? I understand, but why now?
Yep, so let's go through the great point, and hopefully we'll hear the urgency of why we're transitioning in these areas. And then if they don't satisfy your answer, then we'll answer at the end.
Thank you. So we're going to all be, we're all going to be presenting together?
Can I just request that people say their names into the microphone for the minutes when they speak so that I can get it down properly? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, great. Now that we played a little bit of musical microphones, hi, everybody. I'm Kimberly, and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary. And my partner here is Mr. Poska, and he is the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. And we are here with our team of instructional coaches to present to all of you our budget for curriculum instruction and assessment for the upcoming year. So we talk a lot in our district about making sure that we have data-driven decisions. And I think it's really important that we explain a little bit about what it means to make data-driven decisions. When we talk about certain factors that influence student performance, we want to rely on a large body of evidence so that we know that the instruction, the instructional practices that we are employing, the resources that we are adopting, and the decisions that we make with regard to the budget, staffing, all the things that we talked about tonight, are deeply rooted in what we know is best for children. So I'm going to give you one example. An example is widely cited researcher is John Hattie. John Hattie is the individual who spent 25 years conducting and researching what works best for students. And through the course of his 25 years, he examined and he synthesized more than 2,100 meta-analyses, which means that he looked at over 132,000 studies involving more than 300 million students. So when we talk about what constitutes evidence-based, what we're looking for is, we're looking for results that impact student performance positively in any context, whether it's in Nashville, whether it's in Dover, Massachusetts, in China, anywhere else. Okay? So I want to be clear that everything that we're going to be talking tonight is grounded in scientific evidence. One more word about John Hattie's work is that what, essentially what his findings, what he concluded in his findings is that there is, so the measure that he's using is called effect size. Effect size in education research is the gold standard. Any intervention or practice that has an effect size of greater than .4 has positive impact on student achievement. What John Hattie essentially says is, anything before .4, we might as well not even think about it, because kids would have the same outcomes if they didn't come to our classrooms. Okay? So the practices and the resources that we talk about tonight have an effect size of much greater than .4. And what we're looking to do, especially when you talk about our significant numbers of students who are identified, of course, the growing cost of special education services, contract services, what we're looking to do is make sure that we, that we stop our practices that have resulted in what we see now in those inflated numbers. And then we start over, and then we do all of the things that are aligned to research so that we don't have those, the increasing costs and numbers of special education identification, because we just want to do right by kids when they first come to us, rather than having to intervene in that way. So again, evidence-based. Another thing that we heard last night from our Department of Justice is, and I've talked about it many times, the Equal Educational Opportunities Act of 1974. There are federal laws that mandate that the access that we are required to provide to every single student, regardless of English language proficiency status, special education identification, any of those factors. We cannot determine in our school district that kids can and cannot succeed, because what happens when we do that is that we create an opportunity gap. Additionally, what we really want to do is make sure that we're looking at our data so that we know definitively whether or not our resources and our practices actually positively impact all students, every single subgroup.
You know, as we were preparing for this budget season, and we're looking at what our K-12 commitments were, we wanted to make sure we identified these and we planned based upon what we identified. We want to continue to push forward, as Dr. Safdie said, about evidence-based curriculum and making sure our staff and our students have access to high-quality instructional materials. You know, our greatest resource is our teachers. We want to make sure we're providing them appropriate professional development so that they can attend to the needs of the very diverse learners who are in their classroom, as well as, you know, as we talk about, as we enter the 21st century, and Mr. Dunne was talking about the increase in the number of, the use of technology here, we want to make sure we're using technology and the resources in the appropriate way. There's a time and a place for all these tools. I know, you know, sometimes we have a conversation, you know, when you, what is the tool you need? Do you need a hammer? Do you need a screwdriver? Same thing with some of the technology resources we have. We want to make sure our students and our staff are using those resources they need on a regular basis. Next. Again, as Dr. Safdie and Dr. Andre have talked about before, we need to make data-informed decisions, and we need to continually look and reflect upon not only our assessment data, our data analysis in our classrooms, but continually reflect upon those practices on a regular basis. I think we're, we've done a much better job of trying to create some vertical alignment with our grades, with our grades K-12. And this is why this is a K-12 commitment. We're committed to not working in silos. We're committed to tearing down these silos and work together and be transparent in all the work that's occurring on a regular basis. As we've also said before, and again, I feel like we're repeating ourselves a little bit, we want to make sure we have equitable access for all of our students. It's something that we can't, we don't take lightly. It is something we talk about on a regular basis, and that's how we try to prioritize some of our needs in the district at this time.
Great. So like Mr. Poska said, we do have a pre-K, really, pre-K through 12 commitment here. And what we're looking to do is make sure that we identify what our instructional priorities are, and we have done that. And we also are looking to make sure that all of our resources are available to teachers so that we can attend to our instructional priorities. And additionally, we are seeking to make sure that we provide the highest quality of professional development so that we increase teacher efficacy. So back to effect size really quickly. Again, anything before .4, basically, no reason for us to show up to work. It's what kids will accomplish on their own. But when it comes to teacher efficacy, the effect size is almost 1.6. So what John Hattie says is that anything over .4 will get us about a year's worth of growth. 1 point, excuse me, 1.6 for collective teacher efficacy. Okay? Back to our priorities. We talked a lot about, we have been talking a lot about making sure that we are aligning our practices with regard to literacy to 50 years of research that now is known as the science of reading. And we are seeing that, this is why this is a, this is why this is a multi-discipline presentation, because what we're doing is we are aligning that research and we are using that research to drive what we're doing in every single content area, because we know that practicing mathematicians... Because we know that practicing mathematicians, practicing historians, practicing engineers, scientists, we know that they don't just play around with things. They read and write every single day, they speak and listen every single day, and it is part of the work that they do. And we want to prepare students to be able to do that work. So, I did actually add a couple of effect sizes here. We are fully committed to making sure that we are helping students to become proficient when it comes to developing foundational literacy skills. And you'll see here, phonics is just one part of the foundational literacy skill components, but phonics has an effect size of .7. Again, .4, anything above it, looking for a year's worth of growth. Okay? And then, in addition to that, one of the things that we're really, really focusing on right now, because we have been for the last three years, is focusing, we've been focusing on foundational literacy skills. But what we're really committed to doing now, and we have been doing it really well, which we'll see in a little bit, is systematically and coherently building knowledge and vocabulary for our students. So if students can look at words, they can associate sounds with letters, they can put letters together, and they can see words. But if they, if they don't know what the words mean, they can't read text. So it's great that we have kids who can decode, but we need to have kids who can actually read, because they have knowledge throughout the world, and they have expansive vocabulary. You know, the other, the other content areas, so we talked a lot about fiction, nonfiction. We know how incredibly important that is. I, I think that we're all there. We talked a lot about cultivating mathematicians. And we'll hear tonight about how important it is for us to build conceptual understanding for all students. And that is especially true for multilingual learners and students who have unfinished instruction. We are absolutely committed to making sure that we provide opportunities for kids to write in all discipline areas, because we know, effect size, we know from scientific evidence, that when kids have opportunities to write about what they're learning about, and also to speak and listen about what they're learning about, that, that knowledge and that, that, the knowledge that they're gaining is only, it's what I want to use. I don't know, deeper, how about that? And then we'll hear again tonight from Monica Tino about what we've been doing in Amplify, with Amplify Science K-8, so that we really can cultivate our scientists, our young scientists and engineers. So how do we get there? The first thing is we have to believe that every single student is capable of accessing rigorous content and succeeding at high levels. Effect size. Teacher estimates of student achievement. The effect size of that is 1.29. And that is kind of self-explanatory. If I believe you can, I will make sure that my expectations are very high. I will scaffold up instead of differentiating down, and then you will achieve at a higher level. If I automatically decide that you can't do something because of whatever limitation that I proceed, I'm going to make sure that what I provide to you in terms of instruction resources is going to be less rigorous, and you're not going to do as well. We don't want to continue to create opportunity gaps in our school district.
You know, as the leaders here, we believe that all students can learn. And based upon the fact that we have that belief, we prioritized these four aspects going forward, K-12, as our beliefs for this, for this coming budget cycle. We want to propose a vetted-aligned curriculum, K-12. We want to propose evidence-based professional development. We need to continue to provide instructional support, not only to our teachers, but also to our building leaders. And we're fortunate to have all these talented individuals with us, including these individuals with us tonight. We're going to get into some of the details of what we're proposing within each of the content areas. With authority.
Yourself, too. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Quadros, and I am the Literacy Peer Coach at the elementary level.
I'm Carrie Burns. I'm the ELA coach at the middle school level.
So we're just going to spend a few minutes discussing and touching on the humanities piece. You've already heard a lot from our leadership that we are utilizing vetted curricula that's aligned to the, to the research, and that is aligned to the way students and kids learn to read. So, in, in the elementary level, we are committed to that. Every day, our teachers are doing amazing work with foundational literacy skills. And it's important that we continue that work, because we need to continue to help our students crack the code, because that's only one piece of the puzzle. If they don't, if they have that code-cracking capability, but then they don't have that knowledge-building background to go with it, they can't make, cannot make sense of the text. So that, those two things go hand in hand, and are super important for us to stay focused on and committed to the work. Because we know, if you've ever heard the Velcro analogy, knowledge sticks to knowledge, right? So, if our kids are coming in without background knowledge, and they're trying to make sense of text, it's much more difficult. If they can build that knowledge, they can pull from that knowledge, they can gain, gain new knowledge, they continue to hold on to it, and they can work with it and comprehend more complex text, which is always the goal moving forward, right? And we're also committed to that targeted intervention piece with the resources that we have in place already. We're very able to drill down to really meet the needs of the students very succinctly. And teachers have that ability to really tease out where kids may be falling down, or have unfinished learning, or need a little extra support. So I would, I would ask that you really consider, consider mightily these impacts that these, these curricula that we're using currently have on our students, and really help us keep them moving in the right direction towards skilled reading.
And at middle school, we are working to revamp our curriculum, I guess. And we're using a lot of rigorous grade-level novels right now to build curriculum, and we're leaning on some resources, like EL education is one of them. We've been leaning on quite a bit for a lot of different strategies. And, yeah, we're working in a curriculum team that has teachers sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so that we're going to be aligning that vertically. Am I talking about social studies, too, or are you going to take that?
I was going to jump in.
Okay, good, you go ahead.
Unless you want to.
I could say this much.
And I think, you know, I think we, some of you got to hear Ms. Burns talk at the curriculum meeting last week, talking about all the work that's going on in middle school ELA. Same thing is going on at the high school and middle school. We have really an unfunded mandate from the state regarding implementation of a civics curriculum. So, we are working on updating that at this, at this time, more than, in a couple of weeks at the curriculum evaluation meeting. You'll be hearing from middle school and high school, social studies leaders, talking about the work that's occurring with the civics. So, that is occurring at this time as well.
Okay, so this, I won't read this, this quote verbatim. I'll let you peruse it at your leisure. But this is a photo of a second-grade classroom over at Ledge Street. Dr. Sarfie and I were invited to a culminating activity, and the students put on a performance for the community, for their school community, for their families, after they were finished studying ancient Greece. So, this is just a photo that the teacher sent me, and, and they were using the CKLA curriculum, which is that knowledge-building curriculum, which a number of our teachers are using. And it really taught the kids a lot of amazing concepts that you wouldn't think a second grader would be learning about, right? Like democracy, the first Olympics, lots of philosophy, and different topics along that line. So, they did an amazing job, and we have a short little video, I think, on the next slide to show them.
One thing I just want to make sure we highlight is that the teacher said, when we first looked at the curriculum, we thought the kids, we thought it would be too hard. And then, because they persevered, they were able to do all the things that you're about to see now.
We kept it brief, I promise.
We have been walking extremely hard, learning about gods and goddesses, and continents and early civilizations. Come along with us, and so much more. Come along with us and enjoy the show.
So, just to describe a little bit about what's happening. Students learned about ancient civilizations. They learned about ancient Greece. And then they learned that during that time, ancient Greeks came up with myths. And the myths were specifically designed to explain what's going on in the world, or what's going on every single day. So like change in seasons, why we have night, why we have daylight, those types of things. The kids who presented here, they presented to an auditorium full of students, parents, staff members. Every single student on that stage had a speaking part, regardless of whether or not they had a speech delay, whether or not they were proficient in English, whatever the case may be, every single student had a speaking part. We were there for a long time. I know it was hard for you to hear from the beginning, but the kids talked all about what, what, what the continents represented, and how people moved around during, during ancient times. They talked a lot about the, the god and goddess that they represented. Michelle Mills was able to secure some grant funding, to be able to get costumes for all of the kids, so that they could engage in this deep learning. It was such an amazing opportunity to celebrate all that they learned, and to be able to showcase that to the entire Ledge Street community and the Nashville community at large.
So, in middle, I'm going to actually go in reverse order here, only because The Lightning Thief fits so well with what was just shared at elementary. So, we've developed, over the last two years, we've been working on different novel units and launch units at the middle school level. And so I'm just going to talk about the, the novel unit for sixth grade first, which was The Lightning Thief, so also Greek mythology. And we did ask teachers and students last year for some feedback on, I'm utilizing the book, and you can see these quotes here as well. I know that you can all read them. One thing that was, was great about it with a lot of the students, I put this quote from a student here about being able to talk about the book, because that discussion was something that came up in a lot of students' responses. They also talked about their favorite parts of the book, which was really not what I was getting to in the question I asked them. But that was vast as well. They talked about all of the different mythical beings that were in the story as well, so. And I know that, I've talked with seventh-grade teachers, too, this year, who have really appreciated all of that background that the students had coming in with. There's a lot of seventh-grade teachers that do stuff with mythology. So, they had students coming with a lot more knowledge, and I would assume that we will be having a lot more students coming with that background knowledge. Sixth grade, second graders got so into it. But the teachers also were really, really enjoyed using that Percy Jackson book. And, and the students really got into a lot of deeper conversations, and that's what the, a lot of the teachers' comments were about as well. And when we did ask the students if they, we should continue reading this book with, with future classes, over 80% of them said absolutely. The other type of unit that we were working on last year, and are revamping and kind of finalizing a bit this year, are launch units to start out the year. So they're really units that build in systems and routines in your classroom that are just going to help the whole year long. So, establishing protocols for speaking and listening, creating class norms, all those kinds of things are built into the launch units. We're currently working on adding to those, so that we're establishing some independent reading expectations and routines into those units as well. And as you can see, the teachers really enjoyed all of that as well. And next, one more. And really, a lot of that work has been done because of our partnership with TLA. Last year, the focus was a lot on in-class coaching and facilitated peer intervisitation. So there were teachers from all three middle schools that got to go visit each other and see teaching in action in other buildings. And there were also a lot of workshops last year that were available, not just to ELA teachers, but there were some available to all content areas. And then this year, we have what we're calling our Curriculum Council, which is, the focus of our partnership with TLA this year is on building our ELA curriculum. And there are so many different topics that we've covered, and I'm sure that I left many out. But really, one of the biggest changes for a lot of our teachers is changing to allow students to have more agency in the classroom, so really using a gradual release of responsibility, and being able to scaffold both up and down for students when necessary. A lot of focus on academic discourse and using protocols, which I had never called them protocols before we started working with TLA. I was like, oh, yeah, I do that. I didn't, I didn't know it was a protocol. And so a lot of us are, we're using things like talk moves in our classroom, and different, talk, turn-in talks are things a lot of teachers have been using, but there's a lot of other gallery walks and chalk talks and different protocols that we're embedding right into the curriculum, as well as multiple ELL strategies throughout. And I think this quote, I will read this one, because this was feedback directly from teachers about our partnership with TLA. And this teacher said, as the saying goes, "Sometimes you don't exactly know what you need until you get it." And this most definitely rings true when it comes to working with TLA. "It is an experience that completely impacts and transforms your teaching practices on a daily basis. It is an experience that has been so valuable and one that I truly appreciate." There was no negative feedback from a teacher about our partnership with TLA. And as far as the Curriculum Council work goes, it is, it is hard work, but we are, I think, all enjoying it and coming back every week, so I guess that should tell you. But the, the teachers are, were consistently adding more and more to what we are requiring in our units. But we're seeing a purpose for each of those pieces we're adding in, and the work is going really well. Thanks.
What does TLA stand for?
The Teaching and Learning Alliance. We've been working with them here for three years.
And then the other question that I had, and I think all of this is fabulous, and it's exciting to see the kids getting interested in things. I remember when my own kids went through that, like the Percy Jackson phase, like that was a big deal. One of the things that I like about the new Percy Jackson adaptations on, like, Disney Plus, is the diversity that they brought into the story that isn't necessarily in the book. And so my question is about the curriculum that we're using in general. Are we also incorporating those diverse voices and viewpoints? I know, you know, because if we're doing like the epic journey, there's some of the mariposas, for example, which is Mexican mythology. Are we, you know, using any African mythology, or any other diverse voices that reflect the diverse community that we have?
Yeah, we're, we're definitely utilizing, trying to utilize a lot of diverse resources. We were fortunate to be able to purchase a lot of novels this last fall, and three of those that we purchased are from the "We Need Diverse Books" project, I guess they're a project. But there, there actually are four books in the series, and they are short stories. That looks like a, like a regular book, but it's, there's like, I don't know, anywhere from like eight to 12 short stories, and all by diverse authors. So we're looking at how we're going to utilize those and weave them into kind of as many units as we can. But yes, the, the cultural diversity piece is on our minds every day when we're creating this curriculum.
Hi, I'm Beth Wheeler, and I'm the Elementary Mathematics Instructional Coach. These are some of our prioritized curriculum resources in supporting PD for mathematics. They're to support a top priority for mathematics instruction. That has been a shift from teacher-led instruction to student-led instruction. to student-led instruction because we know whoever is doing the talking is doing the thinking. The curriculum resource and instructional PD on this slide have been an integral part of supporting our teachers in this transition. This is how the transition looks in many of our classrooms. In a teacher-led instruction, students may be given a word problem like you see up on the board. And the chart that you see down there is outlining what a teacher would do and what a student would be doing simultaneously. So you can see that a teacher would share and read the problem with the class. The students would sit quietly and listen. A teacher would model each step on the board, narrating what they are thinking and doing. The students would listen and mimic or copy down what the teacher is doing on their paper. Peter Liladall, who is a professor of mathematics and an educational researcher and the author of Building Thinking Classrooms, observed teaching and learning in 40 different classrooms in 40 different buildings over 12 years and saw this model over and over again. And what he found was only 20% of students were doing thinking only 20% of the time. Next. This is what a student-led thinking, my student-led example might look like. Can we keep on the slide for just a second? The teacher would present the students with an image or task to notice and wonder about. This is an example of the task that you're going to see students noticing and wondering about. You'll see that it's the same word problem that I presented before. In the video you're about to see, I'd like you to think about what percentage of the students are doing the thinking and are engaged.
One plus five eighths is the same as four times one plus four times five eighths. And then these are the answers to the ones in the parentheses. And then you just add four plus two, two and four eighths, which means you get four.
But another way, but another way you could do it is you could do an L way, which would, first you would add the three wholes, which would make four and five eighths. Now, five eighths times three would equal 20 eighths, right? So then you have them become two wholes and four eighths. And then you would add them together.
How much, how many yards does she need for four dresses? So we need to get more dresses. So we need to multiply, so we need to plus the answers that we got for this. And then we gotta push it to this, add it to this. And we'll get our answers. So what they did was they got the child's dress and then they got the woman's dress. They got solution one, three times one and five eighths. Three times one, we all know that is three. So it would be three wholes. And so three times five eighths would be 15 eighths. So it'll be three and 15 eighths. Or we could say it as four and seven eighths. And then we have to plus four and seven eighths to this. It's the same thing. Plus these two together.
Add one. I use the model to help because I know that.
Did you have a preferred solution, a method of doing it?
Not really. I just, just like counted the ones and then made the math in my head.
Great. Okay, anybody else?
So what I noticed is the models helped me and when it said three times, it was one time, two times, three times. And I saw that here. And here, when it said four times, it's four times that whole thing. And drawing it out made it very easy to see the wholes and the parts. And you were able to boss around those numbers and let them do what you're telling them to do because you're in charge of them. Okay?
Hi guys, I'm Amy Seo. I'm fourth grade from Charlotte House School. And you saw some of my learners today. In order to bring our math thinking to where it is now, I've been through multi-year professional developments, including when they brought in Peter Liladall, supporting that with his books and Joe Bowler's books and working multi-year with the Math Empowered and Carolyn Worcester, coming into the classroom, having online access to the kits, as well as being supported by her in our schools as well as our math coach. All of this paired with our fully-supported Eureka Squared program allows my kids to show the thinking that they are in their classroom.
So as you heard Amy Seo share, all the components from our first slide have come together to get our students to a place where they are leading the thinking, engaging in rich mathematical conversations, and accessing grade-level standards, no matter of their status, ELLs and students with unfinished learning. All of this sets the foundation for all of our students to excel at higher-level mathematics in the future.
I also want to add that the instructional practices that you just saw, when employed effectively, have the ability, they have the ability to impact students' performance so much that students can make up, again, this comes back to teacher efficacy, right? But if done effectively, the way it's supposed to be done, three years of learning, this type of instructional practice that we're seeing. Discussion, two years of learning. Ms. Raymond?
Does the budget include professional development and support for our teachers?
You'll see that, you'll see that at the end.
Okay, just because this seems like, this is a big shift from what we did in the 90s.
But, but we've been doing this. We're going to be going into year four. That's why Amy Seo was able to do this so effectively. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So, and that was my question. This started as a pilot only in the third grade.
Nope, this, we have been, nope, we have actually been working with Math Empowered for three years. And this, this is Eureka Squared. We previously used Eureka. Eureka had an updated version that specifically had embedded supports for multilingual learners and students with unfinished learning. And so over the past couple of years, well, this is the second year actually of implementation of Eureka Squared, but it's a continuation of the work that we have been doing.
I just want to piggyback on that, that Math Empowered has visited, visited every elementary school once last year and every elementary school, and by the end of this year, every elementary school and middle school, three times. So I would say anywhere from 90% to 100% of our teachers at the elementary level, and I think 100% of mathematic teachers at the middle level have seen Carolyn model and had the chance to debrief with her and have made a plan to start implementing these practices in their classrooms.
But it's not just a visit though. We also have STEMer Institute. We have new teacher orientation. We have our coaches who are participating in coaching cycles. So it's not just a one-off.
So that's my question. Who, right now, is using this curriculum?
100%, 100% of our math, of our teachers from K to five is using the Eureka Squared curriculum. All of our teachers at that, at the elementary level have had the opportunity to engage in the PD with Carolyn Worcester to employ these instructional practices along with the Eureka Squared curriculum. And 100% of our mathematic teachers at the middle level have had the opportunity to employ, to have the PD to use these instructional practices with their curriculum, which I believe is open up in Eureka's, Eureka.
I want, I just want to make a distinction because I, so we have aligned resources and the aligned resources are vetted and we know that they're quality materials. But the next phase of that is how do you actually teach with these, with these resources in a manner that most positively impacts student achievement? So what you saw is just good teaching grounded in scientific evidence. The resource that we use is a resource that again, has been vetted. We know it's aligned to, to our Common Core State Standards, but they're two different things. We can have great tools, just like if I'm a track star or I want to be, I could have the best sneakers in the world. But if I don't practice and I don't get my stride right and my breath right, I'm not going to be able to run any marathons. So they have the tools. Now, what we have been working on is the practice and that, that's what you saw tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Softy, because you answered exactly what I was saying. This is just a tool right now. You want us to implement the full curriculum across?
No, no, we have the, no. So we have the curriculum. This is not, we're not, we're not, we're not piloting anything. This is what we've been doing. We're going into year four of what you just saw.
Okay.
We're continuing. We have priorities, three priorities. And every single thing that we've been doing, three priorities for math, has been aligned directly to the priorities so we get the student outcomes that we want to see.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's already been decided.
Oh no, you're okay.
Hi, my name's Monica Tino. I'm one of the K to eight science coaches. And right now, starting next year, we'll be in full implementation using Amplify Science, our amazing resource that helps us to implement the next-generation science standards. In grades nine to 12, they're continuing their implementation of the NGSS standards. And ongoing in K to eight, we have two K to eight science coaches, myself and Patty Davidson, who work with the K to eight teachers to implement Amplify Science using the strategies that are dictated in the NGSS. We have a little video here showing our kindergartners learning about forces. So a super fun unit, that, those were our Broad Street kindergartners. And those kids were learning about forces. They first learned about pushes and pulls and then they, they continued their learning and figured out that there was, forces have directions and forces have strengths. You know, you can push something really hard or you can push it softly. And so throughout that whole unit, it's phenomenon-based, just like the NGSS dictates and just like Amplify Science helps us to teach that way. The students were trying to be, they were pinball engineers trying to figure out how to make a pinball machine. And they did by the end of it.
Can you just give us a couple of examples of what force and motion might look like later on?
Yep.
In subsequent years.
This slide yet.
Oh, just kidding.
So we're coming to that. So the NGSS increases coherence in K to 12 science education. And this quote from a framework for K to 12 science, from a framework for K to 12 science education kind of encompasses that. It says, "First, it is built on the notion of learning as a developmental progression. It is designed to help children continually build on and revise their knowledge and abilities, starting from their curiosity about what they see around them and their initial conceptions about how the world works. The goal is to guide their knowledge toward a more scientifically-based and coherent view of the natural sciences and engineering, as well as of the ways in which they are pursued and their results can be used."
Next.
So this kind of encompasses that, this idea of forces. So in the next-gen science standards, it tells us that between K and three in that grade band, and we, we teach it in kindergarten, that the students need to know about forces. They need to know about pushes and pulls and that they have strengths and they have directions. They can change speed and direction to get to a certain place and they start and stop. And then in the third grade, scientists learn, they kind of build on that. So now they have, they have to have an understanding of the pushes and pulls and they build on that. And they learned that forces can be balanced and they can be unbalanced. And they also figure out that things don't have to be touching to have forces. Usually we're like, well, you push that, so it's touching it. Or you throw the ball and it's touching it because magnets and gravity don't necessar, you don't have to necessarily be touching for those forces. And they do that with a unit in which they figure out how a floating train works. And then in middle school, they build upon what they learned in kindergarten and what they learned in third grade to figure out that the mass of an object must be quantitatively accounted for in any change of motion due to the application of a force. And the way that they do that, the phenomenon is in that unit is that they have this little pod that's supposed to land in the space station. So they send it up to go gather, you know, soil and soil samples and that kind of stuff to the moon or wherever. And they want it to land in the space station and it misses it. They don't know why, so they have to figure it out. And so when you look at the science standards, this progression is very evident, as that quote kind of said. We're building on their learning. We're not learning force and motion in kindergarten, then doing it again, but maybe with more complex text or something in third grade. And then the same again in middle school, where actually have this progression of them building their learning. So they start very simple, what they can, you know, the simple ideas, pushes and pulls and they have strengths, they have directions. And then they move on to third grade with balancing those forces and then on to middle school and then, of course, on to high school. Amplify Science does this with us, right? So this is a resource that we have that we couldn't, maybe in a million years, if we all, you know, worked full-time doing this, we could definitely do it. But this is, you know, a huge resource that helps us be able to see these connections. And we've, we started the implementation in sixth to eighth, then we went to fifth, then third and fourth together. Right now, we have some K to two teachers trying it out this year. Next year will be the full implementation. But I'm already hearing from teachers, oh, the kids remembered something from last year and so I'll give them, you know, access to it on their account so they can see what the kids were learning and they're bringing, so they already have this knowledge and they're coming and expanding on that knowledge. And so Amplify Science is a resource that really helps us reach the next-gen science standards. So it's a very rewarding experience for me.
Integrating background knowledge has the, when done effectively, has the ability to help students make up two and a half years of unfinished learning.
So how does this apply to the ELL learning? As these curriculums, some of them come with, in different languages, but how is that being carried out into this in catching up for that learning?
So we do have, we do have some Amplify Science resources in Spanish. But when we, so last night, the DOJ talked about, okay, talked about sheltered content instruction. When you employ sheltered content instruction, instructional strategies, you don't need resources that are in a student's primary language. It's great to be able to have resources in a primary language, but what we're trying to do is expose kids to the content and simultaneously build their, their English language and then specifically their English academic language. So what we do is we provide, we provide scaffolds to give kids entry into, into this content. So what that might look like is like if the, if two of our target vocabulary words are push and pull, we might have images. We might, I know that I saw Patty Davidson model a kindergarten lesson. She might use some sort of like a ball for kids to be able to, or even like a tennis racket, for kids to be able to get a sense of what a push and a pull is. And then once they have those experiences, again, we use images. We attach words to images. We use sentence frames. We have a lot of discussion to build the knowledge and build the language. And then slowly, kids acquire language. It's no different than how all of us learned how to speak English. It's no different than how all of us learned how to speak English. When we were kids, we were fully immersed in an English-rich environment. I was lucky enough to be immersed in environment with, with another language. But that's how we acquire language, by being fully immersed in it and having scaffolds to be able to build, to be able to build English language proficiency.
In addition, you know, Ms. Davidson was also the other science coach. There was a presentation that she did last year where she, one of the things about Amplify is it's, it's highly engaging, it's hands-on. There's a video that she had demonstrated with one of her lessons that we went into where, forget the exact lesson, but you go through the, all, all the students in the video. You couldn't, there were a variety of diverse learners in the classroom who were all participating in the activity and all had roles in the activity. I think one of the benefits of Amplify is it provides varied entry points for all of our learners to come in and participate and engage with the content and the standard.
But is it being taught in their language that they understand? I understand the pictures that, and I think that that's where we're failing as a district, right?
No, that's not accurate. That's, that's not, that's not what research tells us.
Not research, but how we're supposed to be able to serve our community.
So we are serving our community by, we are serving our community by specifically employing these practices that we're talking about.
Just launched our quorum. We only have four right now. We need to wait for either Kristen or Sharon to come back. I know, we can just wait till they come back, sorry.
So about that snow we're getting tomorrow.
I think in order to have the meeting open, you have to have a quorum available, not just to open and close a meeting.
Dr. Andre, would you like to make a bet with me on whether we have school tomorrow?
You want to bet?
What happened last time you made a bet with me?
I heard that it went from a two-hour delay to a closing, but I never got a two-hour delay notice. So was it just a closing?
All rumors at this point.
So it's seven fifty-seven, let's wait until eight o'clock and see what happens.
So, so the answer is the official call is at eight PM. And anything prior to eight PM is just a rumor that people are creating for drama.
You still want to make that bet?
SAU thirty-nine closed, I'm just saying.
Yes.
Just to be clear, I'll be at work tomorrow because it doesn't matter.
Be clear on that because I've been getting texts about changing things. And I'm just like, I'm sitting here with him, he's not changing his mind because he's doing something.
So the, so the Nashua schools will be closed on four-four.
Wow.
There'll be an announcement going out at eight o'clock.
I want you to know from both of my children, they say thank you. And we are no longer friends. We can be friends again on Friday.
So, yeah, there'll be an announcement. I, I apologize doing some work during this meeting, but we were getting the calls out. And so eight o'clock, there'll be the official call.
What you're saying is I should turn my volume off now.
So it's not bad that we're having a break right now because everyone's phone will be going off in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, mine, it says like SOS or something when I sit on the side of the table.
I get better service on this side of the table.
We're just hoping, again, that everyone's safe tomorrow. The storm could be, you know, a lot of wind, power outages. But we want to ensure that our staff, faculty, or anybody coming in, especially north of here, was being abundantly cautious. And we don't want people on roads if it's unsafe. So we'll go from there.
Think, I mean, at this point, it's unfortunate to have an extra day in June, but I think most kids will be thrilled.
Before the clocks ring at eight o'clock, I suggest calling your kids and telling them that maybe if they do a bunch of chores like I did, the superintendent might change his mind. So I just got my dishwasher emptied and the cat litter box emptied.
Oh, that's funny. So can I just, can I, I know we're not in a session.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you guys. I, I know you guys run a roll.
But I'm just super excited because the next gen science standards were very controversial several years ago when we proposed aligning the curriculum. And I'm absolutely thrilled with how it's going. My daughter had a project this year about building a, like a colony on Mars or something. And I have, my daughter hates sci-fi and I'm like a super Star Trek fan. Like I am, I'm a Trekkie, I have gear. I was so excited about this project and I was so excited that she was excited about the project. Because we get to talk about like algae for oxygen production and like all the stuff that my little nerdy heart was happy about. But it was exciting to see my not nerdy child, like just really embrace it.
It's the best, isn't it?
I just learned something new about you. I would never have pegged you as a Trekkie.
What?
My god, really?
Yeah.
No, I'm anti-Star everything.
Also, are we, are we done with the break? I just want to put a plug in for.
Yeah, we have a quorum now.
Well, we lost our quorum.
We had to pause and talk about snow days and stuff, but that's okay. It's a good, we got good news. All right, so I just, I do, I do just want to circle back. So one thing that it's important to be mindful of is we're in New Hampshire, okay? I know that, I know that in Nashua, we have, for New Hampshire, a high concentration of multilingual learners. Our district does not represent cities and many other places in the country. So I, I, I just want to be careful and acknowledge that the researchers who developed Amplify Science, CKLA at the Core Knowledge Foundation, Eureka Squared, these folks don't come from New Hampshire. They come from cities where they are specifically designing curricula that is, that is aligned to scientific evidence that, that helps to serve the needs of all children, multilingual learners, all children. And that's the whole point of having high-quality curricula. Again, we're in Little New Hampshire. But, but at Berkeley, in Berkeley, California, where this was developed, the demographics look very different. They're specifically designing curricula with structures in place. Again, aligned to what we know about how people acquire language and content in order to serve all kids. So I, I just want to make sure that, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I, the, the mode of instructional delivery that you're talking about would not be what, what would be best, what would be best practice.
Question.
Yes. And I have to do that.
So in Little Old New Hampshire here, I care about the community. And what, thirty-three percent of our population are not presenting well in studies going forward, all the way to California, for this curriculum. So I was just asking.
That's actually not, that's absolutely unequivocally not true.
Because the curriculum refuses to teach, only wants to teach in English. It refuses to teach in any other language. Is that not true?
So, but I think that you have a deep misunderstanding about how we teach multilingual learners. What you're suggesting is not, is not what is best practice. If we were a dual immersion district and we delivered instruction, which by the way, was five years of my research in Washington DC, in Denver, Colorado, in Roxbury, Massachusetts, in Dorchester. If our model was a dual immersion model, where we delivered instruction primarily in a target language, let's say it's Mandarin Chinese, we would deliver every single bit of math and science instruction in Mandarin Chinese. That's not our model. We are a hundred percent not equipped to have a dual immersion model. But, but to serve multilingual learners, what you're proposing is the exact opposite of what, what research tells us, what we should be doing. And again, I, like, we have a pocket, we have, we have a pocket of students that are multilingual learners. I don't come from New Hampshire. I come from a place where everybody is a multilingual learner and where all of my students are multilingual learners. And these practices are not just because it's my experience or what I believe. It's because it's grounded in research. When you get really high-quality professional development and you teach very effectively, kids do really well. And that's, that's our whole goal. That's our whole goal. So Matt's going to talk a little bit about Look Ahead and then we'll talk about what PD looks like.
And I think over the course of this presentation, I want to thank the coaches who came here tonight to talk a little bit about it. So thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all. They're the real heroes.
What I think we tried to demonstrate was that vertical alignment with, certainly with Eureka, Eureka Squared and Amplify. We are, you know, we're continuing to use a lot of our ELA resources and utilizing TLA as a, as a conduit to help support our staff. We're demonstrating some work with our, 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 our history and our civics at the middle school and high school. And you see an emphasis on the elementary at this time because that's where the priority needs to be because those, we're prioritizing the resources. Going forward, I think with this slide, you see a much more secondary heavy need. Going forward, I think we are going to look for, we, you know, we've done a lot of work this year on our middle school, our social studies resource. That is going to have to come in, you know, as a point of emphasis for next year because there's a need for that. As we continue with this ELA work at the middle school level, I think we're going to have to talk about what are those resources necessary for implementing that curriculum? We're doing some really exciting work with a deeper thinking cohort, talking about how AI can support some of the deeper thinking and impact our, our instruction and our differentiation. At the high school, we continue, we'll have to continue to talk about the curriculum needs and the curriculum updates. And as you've heard before, our portrait of a learner work. We're at the point now where, you know, I think one of the things we're talking about is we've done a lot of the work now, we have to take that off the wall and put it into action. So going forward, you know, for FY twenty-six, you're going to see these points of emphasis come up. But right now, where our FY twenty-five emphasis has been discussed and Dr. Softy is going to get a little deeper into how we're utilizing not only our operating budget money, but also our, our title grant money.
Right. So I love that. Did you coin that, off the wall and into action? That's.
But now I did.
That's pretty, that's pretty great. I didn't catch that. Okay, so what, what this, what we have here, so Matt and I have been working together, again, looking for a pre-K-12 vision and to continue the work that we are doing. So we basically have mapped out a plan to utilize our Title II A grant funds. And Title II A grant funds are only to be used for professional development. The only time we could use Title II A funds for resources would be like if we're participating in a book study and we purchase, you know, professional books for teachers for that purpose. But this really is just for professional development. So you'll see that what we have proposed for next year is, or what we have planned for next year is we're going to continue our ELA, PD, K to five. It's really important that we kind of move to the next level with that. Like Matt said, the middle school is going to continue with the TLA partnership. We have been doing so much work with Math Empowered. And the Math Empowered practices that we see are transferable to all of our content areas. And that's what we're seeing. We're building thinking classrooms across all the disciplines. The reflective educator cohorts are really our mentoring programs for our new teachers. And we have to pay our mentors and that's what that is. We additionally, we have money set aside for our steering committees. At the middle school level, they are going to be using a resource. It's a professional development resource, an online platform called Links Learning. And it is very high quality. It's something that teachers can reference when planning their lessons. And honestly, I wish I had, I wish I had a resource like that when I was teaching. And then we are obligated under federal law to, to provide money to our non-public partners who, who are situated in our geographical areas. So our two non-publics that are, that are privy to Title II funds are St. Christopher Academy and then also Bishop Garton. And there, the allocation for those two schools will be approximately a hundred thousand dollars for professional development. And then if we move over to Title IV A, Title IV A is specifically to be used for safe and healthy schools, well-rounded education, and also for, for technology. And so we do have the opportunity to flex some funds, so transfer some funds from Title IV over to Title II. If we feel that the, that the allocation of funds for those activities will help to benefit our teachers with regard to professional development. So what we have here is we have two coaching positions in Title IV. We have an elementary ELA coach. And then we also have a K eight science coach. And we're using other funding sources for the other, for the other coaches. But that's what we have in our grant right now. And I think, you know, I, I'm pretty sure every teacher in the district can attest to the great work that our coaches do. I, I wish we had many more coaches, but for the model that we have, these guys are just killing themselves and they're really killing it in the classroom. And, and it shows. One thing I just want to make sure that I note because of the K science position right there is that Monica Tino was definitely integral in making sure that at the middle school level, they started the pilot and then the implementation many years ago with, what, four, five years ago? Something like that, four years ago with Amplify Science. When the Department of Justice came last year, the only true notable positive area in their report was the classrooms in which they saw Amplify Science. I just want to say that, okay? It is a resource that we know works, we know it engages kids and we know that it helps to build deep learning. And then again, aligns the NGSS standards that Monica talked about before. We, when we came back from COVID, we partnered with the YMCA and we started a program called Superhero Training Academy. We're using those, we have been consistently using those funds to work with our younger learners and they're, they are, they're working with the coach and they're developing like all those qualities that we want to see superheroes. And then additionally, we have our fifth graders who participate in Superhero Leadership Academy. And we help to develop their leadership skills. They do that as part of their UA cycle. They love it. This will be year four and so we're going to continue that partnership because it's really important. And then almost finally, Mr. Poska and I have some ideas about how to utilize some grant funds for technology related to the CTE program. This year, we purchased some software for, oh gosh, it was for like, it was like, oh goodness, cyber, cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity, yeah.
Cybersecurity. And, and it's, it's kind of amazing and we'd love to be able to explore those opportunities more. And then of course, the projected allocations for our non-public schools for Title IV funds are around seventy thousand dollars. And that's all we have.
Thank you. On the Links Learning, is that a one-time or like an annual subscription to using the platform?
It's our first foray into utilizing it as we went into, with all the changes occurring at the middle school level. One of the points of emphasis that came back from, from the teachers is support with differentiation. This is a platform that will help, will help support staff with differentiating their lessons for all their varied learners in there. So we're, we're hoping to pursue this and create and see what, where this brings us. This will be an initial startup. Going forward, it's not, and we're not sure how much it will cost. But I think one of the things that came up from our staff is the need for that support as we, we eliminated the levels and working with all our students in our classrooms.
I mean, I, I love the idea of having an online platform to access, you know, lesson plans and all of that stuff. I think it's crazy that our teachers don't have that now, so.
So it's definitely on the high side. They gave us all the bells and whistles and we need to negotiate with them. And it may be over several years, but they included additional PD coaching, all their other services. So this is at the high end. So we're still, again, we want to build it into the budget. We still have to get all the approvals and go from there. So we're being very proactive in making sure that we can support our teachers in some of the transitions at the secondary level.
So what I'm seeing is all the Title II funds and all the Title IV funds are allotted all the way out to the dollar. So what we're saying is that we don't need it anywhere else.
This is a federal requirement for us to do this ahead of time. We actually have to submit this budget to the state in a couple of weeks.
But some of this money, you said it had to be for professional development, which we're doing every Wednesday the next school year. Can't some of that be used for that? Or does it have to be used for this?
I don't, I'm, I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure what you're talking about when you said every Wednesday.
Somebody, there's a rumor, I'm sorry, there's a rumor that we're having a half-day every Wednesday. That's not the case.
That's definitely not the case. Nope, definitely not the case. We have a, we have a, yeah. So we offer professional development consistently. We offer professional development, we have institutes during the summer. We have after-school learning, we have in-service days, we have half-days. Not every Wednesday. We have like, I think we have like, yeah, exactly. But, but this, this professional development is not only something in addition to or in place of our school day. A lot of this professional development happens in the classroom, which is probably the most impactful. A lot of this professional development happens in the classroom, which is probably the most impactful professional development.
And I was just saying, can some of this be used for the ELL? So, out of these grants. I know they're not, is not allotted here, but could it be?
But but that's the thing, is all of this reflects our commitment to serving multilingual learners. If you look at the DOJ settlement. If you look at the DOJ settlement and you read it very closely, we recited nineteen times for failing to to um permit. Multilingual learners to have equitable access to core content. We're trying to stop that. What we're doing, the professional development, the resources, the instructional practices, all of those efforts. Directly align to what our DOJ settlement says we have to do. Because what's in the DOJ settlement is aligned to best practice and research. Dr. Nonela Stowe, who's here in the district somewhere. Um I, our instructional practices, our PD, our resources, all of those things. Have been sent to her and sent to the DOJ. There is no resistance to this plan. Because it is a comprehensive plan with very clear and direct instructional priorities. With PD that helps for us to be able to meet our priorities and our goals and 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 additionally. What we're seeing is what teachers have been asking for forever, which is consistent and sustained professional development so that they can continue to get better at their craft.
There's a follow-up to that. Um this this, and Dr. Safi really just outlined. How we're supporting our our tier-one instruction for all of our learners. When Mr. Choper and Ms. Booten come up, there are, we do have access to Title III funds. But Title III funds are more right um are related to ELL services, so. That's where some of those funding could be used for ELL support. And I think when Mr. Choper talks about that, he'll talk a little bit about that. The title and the some of the usage of the Title III funds.
Dr. Andre.
Yeah, I was just, um, Ms. Daniel Williams, I think there's great questions and I. Kind of moving forward, I think we can have a work session. Uh just kind of reflecting on the new, like, there's several new board members on. What is the totality of our um uh budget? How do we apply for federal grants? How are they used? Um again, we can break down what's Title I, Title II, Title III, you know, Title IV IDEA. And really have a grant session. What's really important there is the process that goes into, how did we decide on these aspects? Um going through a needs assessment, um meeting with stakeholders, meaningful con- consultations. So there's a process behind um allocating and it's it's um as Dr. Safi said, this um. The use of federal grants is to supplement and not supplant. Things that we should be doing in our operating budget, this is to help. So we'd love to do on another website or a workshop or a finance meeting or a curriculum meeting to go into. What what are each um federal grant and just do more of that explanation, but I think it's a fantastic, it is confusing of why can you use this and not that? What's the process behind it, but I think we can get into more details.
Thank you so much and I would love that um more information, more sessions. And because what also confused me is because the Esr funds could be spread out through everything too and. And paid a lot for this curriculum over the last three years, so I was wondering.
Yeah, no, the federal grants have a lot more restrictions and allocations and it's really um difficult. And I really feel bad for the new board members, like you're two months on the job and all of a sudden you're making decisions on a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, right? It's just, you're drinking out of a fire hose right now. So again, thank you for slowing us down. Um clarifying questions over the next cou- couple of weeks, so great points, thank you.
And I'm happy to meet with anybody about federal grants. I I met with Reagan when she first started and we went through all the grants, so any questions? And I'm sure Bob um and Sherry Fulton would be happy to join me so that you can learn all about the grants. The final point is this. All of our federal grants require that we use evidence-based resources and evidence-based practices for any activity that we submit. We are not able to have any activity approved if we cannot demonstrate that there is an evidence base for every single activity. It is a requirement, they'll send it back. And so um I I I just wanted to add that piece as well. Any other questions?
So we've um kind of segued talking about our ELL program. So it's a good opportunity to bring up uh Mr. Choper and Ms. Booton um to talk about our ELL programming. Thank you.
Just hold on. All right, sorry. Sorry, Bob. I don't know. All right, um. Next, okay?
All right, good evening. Um if you, uh I, did did everybody attend the session last night with the DOJ? Okay. So some of this is gonna be, we can kind of breeze through the beginning because a lot of it is, well, not a lot, there's not a lot of slides, but. There's just some demographic stuff that we can, we might be able to move through. So Kimberly, you can go ahead with the next one. Seventeen uh nineteen students are identified as ELL. Of those, the fourteen twenty-three are active, meaning that they have not. Tested out of the program yet. They still require active services. The parents do have the right to decline services, which a number of our our parents uh do. But those students who are considered active uh will remain so until they take the proficiency test, which is called the access test. And test as proficient. So even if the parents decline services, we're still required to give them the assessment. We have two hundred ninety-six students who are monitored and what that means is those students did test as proficient on the access test. And then for a period of four years, uh we're required to monitor them, which is kind of keep an eye on and make sure that they're. Uh performing academically and if they're not, um we need to like investigate to see if it's, is it a language issue that is holding the student back? Or is, are there other factors? So that's the monitoring process that takes four years. New Ha- we in New Hampshire are part of the WEDA Consortium, which is forty-two states. We all use the same access test. Our um the the cut score to for proficiency is a four-point-five. On the test, you could score from a one to a six. In New Hampshire, if a student reaches a four-point-five, they are proficient and then they will be monitored for a period of four years. This year, we have forty-four-point-eight full-time teachers in the program and of those forty-four, six-point-eight were funded through Esr funds. And as Mr. Donovan um spoke to earlier, all of those six-point-eight, it was listed at seven, same thing. We'll move over to the operating budget for the coming school year. Danielle, you have anything you wanna?
Okay, let's keep rolling. So we've got forty-six languages in the in the district. We in Nashville are um. Much more reflective of like the the rest of the United States and being that we're so heavy with Spanish speakers. The rest of New Hampshire itself and their ELL programs aren't quite like, they don't have as much of a um population of Spanish speakers as we do. Uh our Brazilian, the Portuguese are not from Portugal, they're mostly, almost all Brazilians. Um and then after that, you can see that's a pretty big percentage there, it's eighty-two. Uh that's eighty-two percent of the entire program. So forty-two percent are born in the US and if we combine that with the six, so that's forty-eight percent, we're almost half US citizens in in the uh ELL program. And Dominican Republic is our largest uh uh country outside the US. So. This is an interesting, the proficiency levels, this gets into um services, right? And for the folks that are new on the board, would, we ended up in um our agreement with the Department of Justice. Mostly because we weren't providing enough service minutes to our students. We just didn't have the staff. Too many students, not enough staff. What this demonstrates here, thirty-five percent of our students are Level One, twenty-three percent are Level Two. By the agreement with the Department of Justice, that's fifty-eight percent. Though all of those students require at least two periods of instruct- ELL instruction a day. So even though, you know, you can look, oh, you have thirty-one percent are Level Three, that's not equal to that thirty-five. That thirty-five is. Like a double hit. Those kids require a double hit. The twenty-three percent require a double hit. So that's where um, you know, services get eaten up. We need to provide the service for a lot of those students. Go ahead.
So what is that? I can visualize what a period is in high school theoretically, right? So that's ninety minutes. In middle school, is it just the the forty-five minute middle school class?
Correct, equal to uh any other period, right?
So how does that work for our elementary students where there's not really like periods?
It's an equivalent to like what an ELA period would be. So if in English, those students in the English language arts class. In second grade, if they're getting a half hour, ELL is gonna be a half hour. If it's forty minutes, it's gotta be forty minutes. So it's just gonna be equal to whatever the ELL, ELA uh period is.
And then a follow-up to that, how does this impact our high school students who only have four periods per day? If they're receiving, if they're at a Level One or Two, do they lose out on fifty percent of their high school credits?
Yep, no, they don't lose out on credits, it's difficult.
Experiences?
So, I I we had, both of us were interviewed today by the DOJ and I know I brought, I don't, we haven't really debriefed yet on her conversation. Um but we brought it, I brought it up because what happens is the kids get locked in with the choices, they their choices are limited. So for, you know, Level One, that's, they need, they really do, two periods is is appropriate. It's half of their day, which is a lot. But they really need to get their their English skills up so they can, you know, approach the academics, right? Where we, or it's kind of, I hope they give us a little leeway for the students that are Level Three, Four-point-four, because they're required. To take the, in ELL course, for one block for the entire year. Where if they were taking an English course, they would take one block for a semester. So what we're proposing is could we have our Level Threes and Fours have AB days? Go for the entire year, which I think is appropriate, right? But they could have one day of ELL and then A, you know, A day, ELL, B day of some other course because. Their schedules are locked, they're locked out in certain classes. If you only have four options and one, they say Block Three, is wiped out for the year. There are certain classes they can't get into, so we're hoping that the DOJ gives us a little bit more leeway as far as how we can service those students. Because we want them to have as many educational opportunities and take classes that they're interested in and just, you know, pursue their education as they see fit.
Is this impacting their ability to meet the minimum graduation requirements, like the number of science classes and English classes?
When students come, when they, when, you know, if you have a true newcomer who enrolls in tenth grade, it it's difficult. So it it's just harder, it's hard to find the time where they can gain enough credits because they're gonna get two English credits and two elective credits. Because it's the four. So it's just, sometimes we have to look at alternative, you know, learning opportunities for them with different pathways as they get older. But they can stay with us until they're twenty-two, so. That's, that's, I think that's, that's where it makes up for that. On the other end is they're allowed to stay in school until they're twenty-two.
I just, I I know Nashville's really, we've built up the CTE program, we've built up some other programs and it. It makes me really sad to think of kids not being able to access.
Oh boy, yeah, we totally advocate for the ELL students to get into the CTE programs. Those those programs are wonderful. And it's a lot of hands-on, you know, you're, you're learning language by doing, you know, so that's, I think that's, uh, it'd be great if we could bolster that up. Daniel, do you have anything to add to this?
I would just add that um similar to what Dr. Safi and the coaches were saying earlier, this is part of the reason why that tier-one instruction from the very beginning is so important. Because we need to make sure that our Level One and Two students, all students, but in this particular moment, the Level One and Twos are having the opportunity. To grow that language when they're in specialized instruction with us, but also when they're in their classroom. We can't afford to have them waste any time. And the more that we give them those opportunities and access points, the better off they're going to be in long-term. And that also helps us to really think about our program effectiveness and are the supports we are providing actually working? And so it's, it's just really important that we're kind of all on the same page and the curriculum that we've spoken about prior to us. Really helps to ensure that we're all headed in the same direction.
This is our growth chart and I uh, I was one of the 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 blue, one of the red, it's back in two thousand, two thousand and one. I've been here for that whole. That whole span, which is kind of cool. Um this is, as you could see, the the blue is the number of active students is quite. Um it just keeps, it keeps coming and uh you keep growing. The encouraging thing is that that green line, that's the one. You could see it was a little stagnant there, stuck in the twenties for a number of years, but um thanks to the support. Of the school board and administration, we're starting to see, you know, we're finally getting a little momentum. Um as far as getting to the staffing to meet the needs of the students that uh um that we need, so. Um that that's, that's an encouraging um sight for me. Any questions on this? All right, let's go. So we decided to approach the budget conversation just through the DOJ DOJ priority, so. Um these are the priorities that they identified in the original report for us and uh we just went through, well, we didn't address all of them, but. As far as the budget goes, like what, how would we address the different areas of the agreement through the budget? So first area was identification and placement of ELL students. They didn't speak to that last night because I think they feel like we've got a pretty good handle on it. Um I think this, identi- this speaks to when students enroll in school to ensure that we're identifying students, we're following proper procedures. Um and replacing students where they need to be with the services that they need. So so what we found when. Um the DOJ agreement was signed, um we really needed to work, and they mentioned it last night as the one, the one area where we've made. Progress is data, right? And and what we had, our data was kind of a little bit murky. Um so we worked, we worked extremely hard to try to get the data as clean as we can. Um so that it's easier moving ahead to use this data to inform our instruction. We can't, we can't use the data if the data isn't, isn't right. So the way that we can address this is by establishing a central registration center. So we've established, I mean, we've looked into a couple of states. Um and what this would be is like a one-stop shop where any school in the district would have one location. Families could go and enroll their children uh to any school at one site. And what that would do is really. Help with our data entry because we'd have a limited number of people entering the data, which would keep it much cleaner. Um families would, it'd be easy, easy for families would have multiple students in different schools to only attend one, one site to register. Let's say their three kids in middle and uh elementary and in high school. And we'd also have an opportunity to have very consistent screening and identification procedures with a lim- again, a limited amount of people performing that work. Um so that would, would help to uh ju- just consistency sake for for data displacement and identification of the students.
Additionally, I would just add that we have an urgency to determine what our students need as quickly as possible. So when our English language learners come. A central registration site would allow us to immediately recognize the experiences that they've had, the background they already know. Know what their assets are and then be able to determine what ELL programming makes the most sense. And how can we move them forward in proficiency of English as quickly as possible?
Do you mean like uh on our website or a physical location?
Physical, yeah.
Families would still be able to register online as they are, but there would also be an in-place location that they could come to for any assistance they need. Um and even potentially even with online reg coming in just to make sure everything is entered appropriately into the systems.
And if I may, we're just looking at uh potential sites that are on public transportation routes so that um it's easy access for our families. Um so we've been in contact with the National Transit Authority, they know of our intentions and so we, um again, I think it's really important to. Um service our families and make sure that it's easy as possible for them to register their students and then.
Yep.
Um in our schools and make sure that we have accurate information.
So staffing and professional development was uh the another second pri- or another priority of the agreement. Um this slide here only deals with staffing and this highlights the uh teachers moving from Esr. To district funds or uh Mr. Donovan always says. The operating budget, yes. Um and it with the additional seven, so he had talked about that seven moving from. Uh Esr to the operating budget and then the additional seven and you could see some of the um. The things that work, the positions that we're considering for those other seven positions.
for those other seven positions, which would be the instructional coordinators, coaches, probably some more, you know, the elementary teaching positions and ELL, Spen teachers. The ELL, all of these are priorities within the compliance agreement. ELL and Spen is an area that is particularly challenging to have enough time to, to, to provide these students with their needs, because they have, there's needs that, they have special education needs, they have their English language learning needs, and sometimes it's, it's difficult, their schedules get very, very tight, right? So if we could have some dedicated staff to work with those students, because again, that's an area where not a lot of people have expertise in working with students that are, you know, intensive need students, or they have limited cognitive ability. So if we could really build some capacity within the district to support these students, that's the goal there. The coaches, you know, the benefit of the coaches that we just saw, that if we could have that for the ELL department, that would be a benefit to the ELL students within the ELL classrooms and in the mainstream classrooms. And the instructional coordinators would help us within our English language development classes, ensure that our curriculum is being implemented with fidelity. So there's, we haven't decided as far as like what, what, how many of what, but those are positions we know that we, we really need to address.
So I guess my question is, how do we find people with these specialties? And where are they going to live?
So I think we do have some capacity within the, we have some capacity within the district, so existing folks could move into some of these positions, which will open up other positions, so we might have some folks, you know, shuffle around a little bit. But go ahead, Danielle.
But this is vital, I don't get me wrong. I a hundred percent agree with this plan. I just don't know how to make it happen.
Yeah, so this is something we've been working on for years. Some of our, you know, things that we've tried haven't necessarily panned out into people, but we have a couple avenues that are working really well right now in terms of helping to build the pipeline going forward. One of our teacher leaders at the high school, Sharon Saunders, helped us to partner with Excel through UCLA. UCLA offers twelve micro credentials to teachers. We were able to get in on a grant that they had a couple of years ago. We're now seeing people are completing those micros, we're able to get them, they can get statements of eligibility through the state, and then from there, there's a pathway to certification. So we've had a number of teachers that have come to us and been able to get certified through that, so that's one pathway. Another is we have a partnership with NHTI that we've really worked to strengthen this year. They were in, almost going to lose their program because they didn't have high, they didn't have enough enrollment in their classes. And so we've been able to fill that need, kind of need, and we have teachers that have been excited and interested in taking the classes. So we started ruling that out probably in late fall. A group of probably ten or twelve, maybe, maybe seven teachers completed the course in January. I think we have about, low estimate, probably about fourteen or fifteen enrolled for this March class. And then I already have a list of almost twenty people who want to take a summer class. So it's spreading through word of mouth, it's spreading because people are finding benefits in it. And so some of these teachers have mentioned an interest in moving over to the ELL department, which is great, because they're coming from that tier one experience as classroom and content teachers, so they know what the kind of expectation is and should be, and will be able to roll that over into ELL. And then we've also just started to briefly talk about, and this is kind of more long-term, about some of the sort of maybe through CTE or other programs of kind of a grow your own. So maybe we have ELL students who are high schoolers who want to become ELL teachers. And so maybe there's a way we can partner with, you know, local community colleges, UNH, whomever, to kind of help them to create a pathway, so that maybe seven, ten years from now, we can actually have students who were once ELL teachers in Nashville, or sorry, ELL students in Nashville becoming ELL teachers.
That's brilliant.
So this, this slide here is talking about the instructional coordinators and this kind of, this highlights what our vision would be for those positions. Just, you know, just consistent instruction across the content areas, helping us observe teachers, to provide feedback to them, improve instruction. You know, this goes on for, I, I see these positions helping not just in our English language development courses, but also all of our courses, because we need, it's kind of the same thing Dr. Sarfey was talking about with her coaches. We need as much, our teachers need as much support in working with these diverse populations as possible. The more folks that we have bringing their expertise into the classrooms, the more successful every teacher is going to be. So that's where, that's the vision for these positions. And I, you know, to be honest, I don't want to, also for these folks, I mean, there's so, the, the agreement, there's just a lot, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of just data, there's a lot of things that need to be checked on as far as, you know, ensuring that special education students are receiving the proper amount of instruction in both ELL and Spen and service minutes. So these supports would really help us really work toward being compliant with the agreement.
All right, is tracking that stuff a challenge with our current staffing? Because people are, are doing other things or, or, you know, or we don't have designated people to be doing that data entry?
Well, it's, beyond, the data entry is, is one, and the other end of it is ensuring that the, the data that we have, that we're, we're meeting our obligations to our students. So it's, it's not just, the one end, like, let's say the front end, if we have a central registration, all that data is clean, then it's the oversight of the data. Like who's making sure, okay, this, this guy's not getting the service minutes he needs, what are, what are we doing? Why is that happening? So it's that follow-through is, is what we need support with.
Can I, can I ask maybe a silly question? You know, barring no budget limitations at all, is there a real-life tracking minutes service that exists, like when kids click into classrooms? And I know that there are some schools that, you know, you can sit in the hallway and kind of do, keep tracking on an iPad, but would there be an application to keep that real-time tracking, like a kid clicks into classroom and clicks out and?
So the service minutes is more related to their scheduling. So it's, it's more about their, their opportunity. If a student chooses not to come to school, I mean, that's, they're, they're missing service means, but they have the opportunity there. This is more of kind of the, I think what Heather was getting, or, you know, when, when students get locked out of services. So it's more about ensuring that a national school district is providing the different students at different proficiency levels with the opportunity to get the services that they are entitled to.
I'm just wondering if there's an easier way of tracking it?
We actually.
That's posted on my desk currently. Because part of the, the struggle has been, there's just so much data that needs to be collected, and we have Aspen for our student management system, and technology has been phenomenal this year in working with us to really put some new reports in place, create new fields, help us to run different things. But I also sent that email today, asking technology to see if we could talk through some things, because I'm just not sure how much more I can get out of Aspen, or if we need to start to look at, are there other avenues to do exactly what you're saying? So it's a really good point.
Yes. I guess I had a question, like, so previously, what has worked? Because we've been working on it for a while. What other ideas have out, already been out there, so we don't recreate that wheel? Like you said, you tried a couple of different things, but they didn't work. So what were those things? And, yeah, what were the things that were tried? And how do we not repeat that?
Yeah, so what I was speaking to, sorry, was specifically regarding staffing. So previously, our main sort of recruitment strategy was posting jobs, having job fairs, you know, teachers who were new graduates, asking them to reach out to their networks to see if there was anyone. So it's not necessarily that that's not working, I misspoke, I apologize. It just wasn't casting a large enough group of candidates for the amount of need we had for teachers. So that's simply all I was referring to, was just in terms of recruitment.
So what, I guess I'll second up that question. So in the past three years, what hasn't worked for the data collection that we need to do so that it doesn't end up on your desk?
I, I can, I'll speak to that one. I know what, what hasn't worked was not having an assistant and me being a half-time ELL director. So this is the first time, I'm full-time ELL director. I used to be split between ELL and student services, which I, you know, I have no shame in saying that there was no way I could perform all the duties that were required, and we didn't have an assistant. So this year, we were, we've been able to really clean things up, put systems into place that improve our collection. Now it's okay. What are we, the next step, what are we doing with it?
Absolutely. Thank you so very much.
Jaleel. I, I just wanted to say that, sitting through the presentation last night was, was, it saddened me.
Yeah.
But what kept popping into my mind, and it wasn't really mentioned overtly, is that this information was all from six months ago.
Yeah.
And, and since you've got, you know, you're full-time, you've got Danielle, I'm sure that there have been a lot of things that have happened since October, that we're, when we get the next report in May, or whenever it is, is going to show a big significant improvement over the picture that was cast last night.
And, and we're, we're hoping the same thing. And actually, after the event last night, I was speaking to two of the lawyers, and I just said it was, it's just such a shame, because it was such a nice environment, you know, it was, people felt good, they were happy to be there, but the message, just the next time, the message has to be very different about the progress that we've made, and not so much where we haven't moved the program.
But I think, I mean, I think the other thing that I kept reflecting on last night was the changes that the district has gone through since the agreement first started. So it started, COVID hit, and we also had some significant administrative changes after not seeing progress on the DOJ thing. And so I think that, I think that, that the district was slow to begin because of a variety of reasons, but the last budget season we had, with Dr. Andres has addressed some of it, there were some administrative changes that are addressing some of it, and now we have another budget that is focused, like laser-like precision on what the DOJ is asking us to do. And that's a, a big shift than what I saw, you know, three years ago or four years ago.
Yeah, that graph that showed earlier with the, you know, change in staff, I was that first twenty-one, two thousand and nine. That twenty-one where we were stagnant, we came and asked for positions over and over and over and over again. And although, you know, national enrollment overall might be going down, like you can see our ELL numbers keep increasing, so the support has been huge.
Right, to your part, to your point, Ms. Raymond, this is why earlier I had stated, I was just, I'm just grateful for, like, for the first time, I feel like we have momentum. We know that we have the school board that is a hundred percent behind the program, you know, whatever, I'm not going to say whatever, but definitely moving with what we, what we need and also administration. So this is a, it feels like we, we're definitely, you know, it's kind of like that cruise ship. It takes a while to turn, right? But I think we're, we're finally getting that, that, yeah, that forward momentum that we need. So it feels, it's feeling better.
I also want to point out that the information that they got, the six months ago was from six months before that, so they were reflecting on a year ago's information. So we should have more info. So we have a whole year of data that they haven't collected yet, so I wish they were a little bit more louder about that when they said it last night, because we've done a lot of work in the last year. And a shining example that they were talking about was the ELL position and the, and the assistant director. So this has been a fantastic addition that we were able to add over the last budget cycle, so.
For sure.
And that being said, like, we've absolutely made growth, but we also recognize that there's a lot of growth still to be made. So this is just the first step in what will most likely be a multi-year request for additional support.
Yeah, for sure.
So I just want to add to the questions around data and cleaning it up. And you'll see, again, going from current systems to emerging systems, like this slide from earlier, is that in this position, in our vision of what's the instructional coordinator is doing, or in the next slide about a literacy coach, is different types of data. And so we're talking about student enrollment, what's their proficiency level, do we have the right address, that type of data? And then between our vision of emergence, emerging system around a coordinator or a coach, the data's around students' needs. What's the trends, what's the instruction, how do we support teachers? So those are two different data sets. Do we have the right information in the system? But then, how do we support our teachers? What does the instruction look like? So two different data points, and that's kind of the transition of, if we have the right data in the system, how do we provide job-embedded professional development and coaching for our ELL teachers or our regular teachers of special education? And that's some of our vision kind of going forward in these positions. Future.
And this, the literacy coach, this kind of makes me think of that saying, like, when all you have is a hammer, everything's a nail. So for our, we had one style of programming, right? And we, we provided that programming to every English language learner that came through, no matter what their, their level of literacy was in their first language. Everything was, we have one service model, and that doesn't, that's, does not work, right? And this is what, it's exciting for us, is to get the technical things, data kind of cleaned up and all this, and then making the real impact changes, where when a student enrolls, we can conduct reading screeners to ensure, like, okay, this kid has gaps here, we're going to fill those in right off the bat, instead of waiting for four years ago, well, we're not seeing a lot of progress, what's, what's going on here? So these, this, all of this speaks to being a lot more proactive as a program than what we had been, because we, we had periods for English language learners to go to class, and we could instruct them, but we had different needs that we weren't addressing. So this is where, like Danielle just said, there's still a lot of work to do, but this is a lot more of the fun work than, you know, the, the technical stuff that we had to get cleaned up. All right, so professional development, obviously, is another leg of this, and the part, the portion related to ELL, this is part of a comprehensive professional development plan that the district is, is pulling together. We have contracted with the Wisconsin Center for Educational Product and Services. By the agreement, we, we have, we need to provide teachers with ten hours of professional development a year. And our, our goal is to, to get that, get this professional development to a point where teachers can, can take what they're learning in the professional development sessions and use it very practical in the classroom, making a difference in their instruction. The year that we had this year was kind of a little bit theory-heavy, because it focused a lot on proficiency levels and the LEAD standards, which is all, you know, we had to take a step back a little bit to provide the background, and this Dr. Sarfey was talking about background a little bit earlier. And now the, the push is going to be to move ahead to, to the professional development, supporting teachers with their instruction for difference, differentiating structure of different kids at different levels. Dr. Andres, you want to, anything? Okay.
So the priority, DOJ had a priority for our work with English language learners and the duly identified students that we spoke about earlier. And that was, we talked about the positions for, you know, ELL slash Spen teacher. This, this is a challenge in population, it's probably, you know, our most vulnerable population within the district, a student who's not a native English speaker and also has a learning disability. So again, you know, we've never had anything differentiated for this type of learners. This is kind of where we're recognizing the different types of learners we have, and how do we address their needs with different programming? So that's, that's what this, the positions we spoke about earlier, we address. And also, you know, if we can provide small group instruction to our duly identified students, that also frees up English language learner teachers to work either within the classroom, supporting classroom teachers, or with their own identified English language learners. So it kind of helps us with resources and concentrating teacher expertise in different areas. So I think that covers that one.
And I'd just add that those positions will help us to build capacity within the district to support, like, also our special educators as well, who may be working with students in intensive needs for the first time, because they may not have ELL certification, but these students are coming to them. And so that partnership is just so important, and these positions will really help to facilitate that.
It's a collaborative effort that we're going to really work and to grow before the end of the school year. We've, you know, we put our energy at the beginning of this year into data, we did a lot with communicate, actually, that's the next slide, a lot with communication, meaning like interpretation services, translation. And then I, for the rest of the school year, we're going to work very closely collaboratively with the special education department to make sure. And it's all about building capacity within, within the district of the ELL department and the Spen department to better serve the students. So another area, priority area was curriculum and resources. They mentioned last night that it took us a little while to get the nine through twelve curriculum, that's. curriculum, that's being implemented now, in a curriculum implementation team in the high school, working on that. We've, the Vista program and K through eight has been around for, since 2022. So we've addressed those. So that's another area, like, you know, if you went back last night, you know, that's, I'm not going to say it's checked off because curriculum is an ongoing process, it constantly has to be reviewed. But we're, we've made progress on that, at that priority as well.
And there's, there's the communications and the family engagement coordinators, those, if you were at the event last night, there wouldn't have been anybody there without the family liaison coordinators, they play such a pivotal role for, for the school district and the ELL department in communicating with parents. And, and they established, it's, it's just like teaching, it's, it's about relationships. These folks are able to establish relationships with, with the families, where they trust them, they're the conduit to the school. And you could see last, like, they, they were able to, to pull together a nice turnout of our non-English speaking families. So learn, like, it would have been a lot better if it was, if the topic was about our progress, we'd do something like that at the beginning of next year. But they, they are, they're integral, and the principals with their Title I funds, almost, they all identified that the family engagement coordinators were a priority to have, these are really, really important positions. And to be able to put these out full-time on the operating budget is really an exciting improvement for, for the district.
Ms. Raymond?
Do we expect to lose any of our current ones because they're not able to make the time commitment jump?
So we've had a, not many, maybe a couple, one or two that have voiced just an interest of staying part-time, and so we may have some flexibility with the additional ones that are covering those six schools near the bottom of the slide. So we, of course, don't want to lose anybody, so we're willing to work with whomever.
Demi Therney?
So we've just got a, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and it's great work, and we're looking forward to it. And like I said, I'm looking forward to the day when we can have an event like we had last night and talking about the progress we've made and our students have made, so.
So I know there was a lot of information between Mr. Donovan, Dr. Soffey, Mr. Poska, Ms. Booton, and Mr. Chopra, but going back to, again, the original of the, the night, it's, it is about the operating budget, it's an increase, but it is really rethinking and reimagining from our current status, systems to our emerging system as we go forward. But again, the beginning was numbers, and I think over the last couple hours, you heard the excitement and the possibilities and the supports that we intend to have in place.
Any more questions? I do want to say that my first year on budget, I sat down with Mr. Donovan and I asked all of the questions that made me feel like an idiot that never graduated any school. And he was really great about breaking it down for me and explaining, you know, how the money flow works. I highly recommend any of you guys to send him an email. You're welcome, Mr. Donovan. They will also bring cookies. Ooh. Is there anything else that you guys would like to add?
So again, I want to thank, this is not possible without this incredible team. Next week, you'll be hearing from more incredible administrators from IT, plan ops, and special education. So hopefully, at that time, again, there'll be more information, able to answer your questions over the next couple of weeks as well. Mr. Donovan will be distributing all the supporting documents. I know Ms. Jaleel came in with her binder. So a lot of, we, we have a lot of links that'll be available to you, but if you need anything in paper, just let us know, be more than happy to create the binder for you.
I just, I had one additional question. I'm just wondering, you know, we've not been fully staffed with paraprofessionals since COVID, probably, I guess. How has that impacted your program? Because when I've been a long-term library sub in the different schools, I've noticed that a lot of paras work with the ELL students. And are you having, is it a problem that you can't get enough paras even?
We put our energy more toward getting teachers than, than paras. And paras are a nice support for some of the, like, the really lower level, but we, we're definitely more interested in having instructors in front of the children to providing that, the, the support they need.
Thank you.
So just one small thing, there was one extra copy of the, the original PowerPoint in here, I'm going to leave it in here, but can we make sure that there are copies of the handouts tonight? I know they'll be online because we're fantastic about putting things online, but can we have extras for the people who weren't here for next time in the book or in the bag or whatever? I don't know, so personally, I'd like to have, for budget. Oh, we can just put them in the bag? Like, I'm a tactile, I like to take notes on the budget so I can pull it out and look it up later. Email's not going to do it for me. But I was here, so I don't know about the other people. Thank you so much. That's all I had. I knew I would forget if I waited.
Mr. Marku, if only I could let you make that motion. I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Who seconded?
Second.
Given by Ms. Prin?
I had my microphone on.
Ms. Prin seconded.
Yep.
And it is nine o'clock PM, we are adjourned.
No, you have to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dare somebody to say no. Anyone against? All right, we are adjourned at nine o'clock.